You'll be joining us for the presentation for National Grid this evening?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
You'll be joining us for the presentation for National Grid this evening?
Yes, I will. Yes, I will. Yes.
Okay, all right then. So listen, I'll tell you what. So let's not be laborious anymore. Dante, are we recording at this time?
Yes, we're recording.
Perfect. All right. So we are now going to call the public hearing to order. I want to welcome everyone to the monthly hearing for Brooklyn Community Board Nine. My name is Fred Baptiste. I serve as Chair of the Community Board Nine. And this evening, our topic is going to be with respect to, the scoping plan that was developed by the Climate Action Committee. Just in terms of background and Ms. McClure, please correct me if I go straight any point as well. In 2019, the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act was signed into law in New York State. Part of what came out of that was a Climate Action Committee, a council, I'm sorry, which was tasked with developing and drafting a scoping plan, which would discuss the reduction of admissions, the increase of renewable energy, and climate justice in the state. So from that, there was a document that was prepared, and National Grid is here with us this evening to respond to the proposal, give us their, share their thoughts as well. And after that, we are also going to take testimony from members of the community and board as well, who may have any questions. And Ms. McClure, if I were to ask if you would serve as our subject matter expert as well, if there are any questions.
Sure, tour degree? Yes.
Understood. Duly noted. Okay, so with that being said, Ms. McClure, the floor is yours. Please feel free, in terms of present.
So thank you so much. Thank you all. My name is Renee McClure. I am the Director for Community and Customer Management for New York City for National Grid. Razik Seebrook is our Brooklyn Manager. Unfortunately, due to unforeseen sickness, he's sick, and so I am stepping in on his behalf. You actually see me sitting in my car because I'm scheduled to be in an event. So I just, but I wanted to just let you know that I'm here to support and provide, and ensure that this meeting can take place. So thank you again for this opportunity. So just wanted to talk about the CLCPA, which is the New York State Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, known as the CLCPA. And you're absolutely right. It was put together by the Climate Action Council to see how we're going to move forward and meet the 2050 goals for a clean energy transition. With that in mind, there was, back in December of 2021, the plan was sent out to everyone. It was released as a draft scoping plan for public feedback. And so through that period of time, up until July, around the July 2022 timeframe, the public had an opportunity to provide testimony, feedback, attend some hearings to learn more about the plan. Actually, on December 19th of this year, 2022, the information and the feedback, a part of the plan is scheduled to be released. So what National Grid is doing is we're having these conversations with the community, all community boards, elected officials, just to bring awareness to what this plan is all about. Talk about, you know, how do we make that transition? And then also share information about National Grid's involvement to get to this place with the plan, as well as some of our things that we want to do or like to see in the plan. So what happened was a group of utilities came together and they provided their feedback. National Grid provided their feedback into the plan as well as others, and other utilities as well. And the purpose of that was to say, you know, look at what, some of the things that we think would work, some of the things that we, you know, have some concerns about, and how do we ensure that whatever the outcome of the plan is, is that everyone is aware that it's going to involve all of us. The utilities, the government, and the community. So before I go on a little bit into it, I just wanted to just give just a little bit of information regarding some facts. So heat is the largest sector of the New York energy economy. And 35% of the total energy that was used in 2020 was for heating. The annual heat energy consumption is more than double the annual total use of electricity produced in New York City. This is equivalent to an average annual power generation of about 22 Indian Point nuclear plants, or more than 11 times the annual power generated from all offshore wind that New York City is aimed to build by 2035. And just as another side note, and most of this information is in your presentations and the packages that we sent you, fossil fuel currently provides 92% of heat energy. So with that in mind, we understand that we are moving, National Grid's goal is to move towards the fossil-free, is going to move towards fossil-free initiatives in line with the 2050 plan. But one of the things that we've recognized that when we saw in the plan that, you know, electrification, we're all aboard and on board with electrification, we understand it. You know, part of our portfolio is electricity, not downstate. We're all gas, but when you look upstate and also into Massachusetts, we have gas and electric. So we understand the importance of the electrification process. But we also understand that there should be choices. There should be an opportunity, not only for electrification, because some buildings may or may not be able to be able to do that. In totality, there should be options, not only to those of the building owners, but to our customers as well. So we're looking at renewable natural gas as an option. We're looking at hydrogen, blended hydrogen as an option. We're also looking at geothermal, and of course, wind and solar. We have our Ventures Group, which is looking at, we just partnered with a wind organization to, you know, really go in and dive into wind investment. So we're investing in a lot of these technologies so we can provide an overall portfolio for our customers. So part of the things that National Grid is doing is we're looking at how can we maintain energy on an affordable level, which we believe is essential to the transition process. We also want to ensure that the path to net zero must preserve reliability and resiliency of the energy systems in place. We want to establish an energy transition that is just and equitable for all New Yorkers. President Rudy Winter believes that no community should be left behind. And so especially, especially when we look at economically vulnerable customers and what's conceived to be, or perceived to be disadvantaged communities. And we want to create an energy transition that is fair to workers who have dedicated their careers to providing our society with safe and reliable energy services. So when we think about all these things, I would have to say that some of the, we created a, National Grid has created a, what we call a fossil-free plan. And I just want to list a couple of things within that plan. So National Grid's ambition is to fully eliminate fossil fuel from our network no later than 2050, and I had just mentioned that earlier. And this pledge sets out a pathway that utilizes existing technology, which I mentioned RNG, and builds upon expectations for the advancement in green hydrogen. Our analysis of cost and practicality favors this approach for our customers versus full electrification. And so when we look at the CLCPA plan currently, CLCPA only requires an 85% reduction in admission from the base year. And this allows for our existing skilled workers to remain in place. So we're looking at plans, or we're adding for, we're asking the CLCPA to look at things that would include these type of technologies, just not straight electrification. So that is our goal, that is our plan. And all the documents that we provided shares our plan. It shares a one-pager, which we sent you, which shares a one-pager that we would ask that, you know, consider submitting, sending out to your constituents, and to ensure that everyone is just aware. You know, we just want the awareness raised that this is something that's going to impact all of our communities. So if I walk away or talk away, or talk about three different things that we really, really want you to walk away with through this conversation. One, our core message is very clear. We want to ensure that the transition allows for affordability and choice. We believe customers should have a choice, not just for electrification, but to look at RNG, to look at hydrogen, other alternatives to just straight electrification. We need to keep the prices down and to give New Yorkers the freedom to choose what works best for them. The second thing is supply. We cannot meet New York's clean energy goals with just wind and solar. We need to use all types of tools at our disposal. And again, a lot of this technology is still being developed, and it's still being implemented, and it's still being looked at. So we understand it's a growing process that we're all going to do together. And finally, economic growth. We cannot let the clean energy transition undermine economic growth and put our workers, our workers out of work. And when we think about the transition, if we look at RNG, which is the renewable natural gas, or we look at hydrogen or blended hydrogen, that allows us to continue to use our infrastructure, of course with retrofit and modifications, but it still allows, we're saying, let's lose, let's use the infrastructure that we already have in place to now not move necessarily natural gas, but maybe a blended type of hydrogen and natural gas, or a RNG through those same systems. So that's some of the things that we're looking at. You know, our teams are working very closely to ensure that the things that we're looking to put in place are in line, you know, with the direction of the 2050. We have many teams on the geothermal. I sit on the geothermal team with Razik. Razik is involved with a hydrogen project that we're looking to try to bring back to New York. We just, to the New York area, we just, we're working with NYSERDA on that project. We just secured a mobile hydrogen type of unit that we're going to be looking to roll around to talk about how people can understand more about what hydrogen does. We did a demo on the hydrogen, using a hydrogen gas grill. So we're looking at all these technologies that would help move us to a safe, secure, reliable, and affordable system by 2050. That's the message that we're sharing. We just want to share the information to raise awareness to our communities, to everyone that would be a part of this, to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to understand what's happening and what's going to be involved with this transition. That's, I can stop here. I said a lot in a short period of time, so is there anything else you would like me to focus on? I can take any questions, you know, what I can answer, I'll bring back to the team.
Sure. I'll tell you, if you would, if you do have a few minutes, what I would like to do is first take anyone who has, if there's anyone who actually has testimony they would like to provide this evening, let's take them first, just so we can make sure that they're in and they're able to provide that, you know, as part of the hearing. And if you would be kind enough to hang around, if we have questions, we can take some questions as well. If you'd be willing to answer whatever you can to the best of your ability.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. All right. So at this time, are there any members of the board or the community at this time wish to provide testimony for the board? Please use the raise hand function. We'll create a speakers list. At that time, you'll be provided an opportunity to address the board. Speakers are given two minutes, two minutes to make, to provide their testimony. Okay? After we've concluded that portion, then we'll take questions for anyone who has, you know, would like to ask questions from the presenter. All right. Dante, do we have anyone who's raised hands to provide testimony?
I believe that Board Member Suki Chung signed up to give testimony prior to the hearing.
Okay, is Suki here?
Hi, yes. I'm happy to let anyone from the Environment Committee go first if they looked at this issue.
I don't think we, let me see. Is anyone else wishes to provide testimony?
And then in the attendees, Ms. Alicia Boyd's hand is raised.
And I see that. Okay. So I'll tell you what, Suki, let's go ahead. You have your two minutes for your testimony, and then we'll take Ms. Boyd, and then we'll take questions from.
So my first comment is just that this hearing topic, it's very important, and I'm glad it's been raised, but it's just coming a little bit out of nowhere for me. It seems like from the materials that there's a Climate Action Working Group at the state level, but we haven't gotten anything about their proposals or who they are. So that would have been very helpful context. There's also at the city level, Local Law 97, which is going to affect us. There's the city rollout of EV charging, which is going to affect us as well. And just, it really would have been helpful to have more of that other background material, or if the Environment Committee had looked at it first and come to us with something. And also, like, I do understand that there's a lot of work to be done to get to these goals. And it would be really helpful to understand or to see what coordination is taking place between different agencies, if you're doing street work, if you have to upgrade the grid, if you're considering geothermal, if you're putting in EV chargers all along the curbs. I think, you know, like, how many times are we going to rip up the street? Where is everything going to go? We, you know, I think we'd like to see some coordination as well as more outreach to the public, especially on the city level, about their initiatives as well, like Local Law 97. That's all I had to say.
Just with regards to that, so this is something that is still very early in terms of the draft scoping document has been produced. And this is National Grid, one of the, you know, the energy providers who's giving some commentary with respect to this. So there's still a lot of runway on this topic in terms of, we'll be having a lot more conversations. But we wanted to take this opportunity to kind of introduce the topic, get some initial feedback in terms of what the things are we should be looking for as a community, as a district. And that will be shaping the conversation as we continue to go forward. So we're still very early stage. There's nothing set in stone. But, you know, we're bringing in partners, we're bringing in stakeholders to kind of start having this conversation. Okay, please, if we have Ms. Boyd.
Okay. Should be able to.
So if you don't mind while you're waiting for additional questions. You know, to your point, to your point.
Yeah, excuse me, excuse me. Am I going to speak, or is that, am I allowed to speak?
Right, that was just making a quick point. Yeah, we're going to recognize you. Ms. McClure, just finish your point, and Ms. Boyd, we're going to take you right now.
Sorry. Yeah, I was just going to say that it's so early in the process, to your point, that the idea is bringing the awareness to the communities to ensure that we do have these type of conversations, to address many of the questions that the young lady just mentioned. And these are things that we need to ensure that at the forefront as we look through the implementation of how this is going to roll out. So those were great points that you pulled out and mentioned. And so, yes, as we move that needle down the road to get to the place of implementation, those are the things that we really have to look for, look to bring together. How do we have that coordination with all the utilities? Whether it's, you know, gas or electric, Verizon, or another kind of company, you know, because it is a big endeavor. And we just want to make sure that we're all together pulling the same way to get to that goal. I just wanted to just comment back of your comment that you had mentioned, sir.
Ms. Boyd, I'm sorry, you have before now.
I, you know, this is supposed to be a hearing, and so I'm not sure that the way in which it's being conducted is being conducted as such. Normally, a hearing allows everyone to speak, and then after the end, then people can make comments about whatever. So the constant interruptions after each person speaks and responding to them doesn't sound like a hearing. It sounds more like a board meeting in which community residents have a right to speak, and then somebody responds. So that's the first issue. The second issue is that, probably falling back on some of the things that Suki has said, clearly, this is one, you know, to have the gas company come and then position themselves in being the ones who inform us when they themselves are trying to leverage power within this process, and thus by coming to us first, instead of having the committee that is actually creating these initiatives so that we can hear what those positions are first, and then look at the other participating utilities and find out what their positions are to allow the gas company to come here and be the first ones to inform us, and at the same time, position themselves to influence us without having a full understanding of exactly what this issues, what the issues are. I think it's a little unfair and should not have been done this way. I think that the commissioner, somebody from the commission, should be brought to the community. That information should be disseminated to the community to be able to attend a meeting where that person sits there and describes what the initiatives are, and why they are looking for, you know, 95% to be electrical, and what would be the positives and negatives about that, as well as to present us with information that might be a little bit more impartial as far as what could happen and what would be the ramifications for us as residents if we did a hybrid, if we didn't do a hybrid, if we went and included, you know, each utility's input and what would be the positives and negatives of those. And then have the utilities come and present, and then we can then have more educated questions for the utilities than currently exhibited. So I would suggest that this goes back to committee, and that the community be informed if it ever went to the committee, which I don't think it did. And then residents are invited, and not just an email to board members, but to the community.
This is what I need you to, your time has expired. I need you to, we need to take other speakers. Points are noted. Thank you very much. All right. We will now see Warren Burke. You have two minutes.
Hey, everybody. I'm Warren. I'm a member of the board. First of all, thank you for bringing this to us early, and hopefully considering, you know, inserting this as your decision-making. My main concern is this. Our Crown Heights, you know, our residents and our building owners have very small footplates and buildings. And in terms of them converting, you know, converting to, from oil to gas or electricity, my question arises, how are we going to support these people to finance these conversions? So, you know, it's something that's very important to us. We are, our building owners, for the most part, are not wealthy. And I'm hoping that you will integrate some sort of financing to help these people convert to meet the demands or whatever you're under. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Warren. Next, we will see Mr. Louis. I apologize about your last name, Mr. Clay.
You're muted. Oh, sorry. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so this is my first time here. So nice to meet everyone. My name is Louis Clayson. I'm Brian Cunningham's new communications director. So just coming on here to sort of introduce myself and, you know, share a couple of updates from Brian's office.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clay, if I could, right now, we're in the middle of the hearing for the Climate Action Committee report. But we will take acknowledgements shortly when we get into the business session. So we'll make sure.
Okay, good. I apologize. Yeah, this is my first time, so I.
No worries. No worries. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so this time, we'll take Ms. Westerall.
Hi. We, the EP Committee, didn't hear anything about this. We heard about it the same as everyone else. When somebody says to bring it back to committee, is that for us to work on? Because I hadn't heard anything about it outside of, outside of what we've been sent, so. I just wanted to say that, and also, where my home is a small house, and we're considering converting and have investigated financing through a company that installs solar roofs. So at quite a, and you can get a loan at 1% for this at the moment. So we're considering that, just so people know, there's already programs and tax payments and all kinds of good stuff out there. There could be some more. It'd be better if we had, were able to use, store batteries and not send it all back to ConEd. There's a few things like that. If you, if anybody wants to investigate further, I have quite a bit of information, having worked on this just this week with my own home. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Westerall. Are there any members of the community or board who wish to provide testimony at this point? In other words, you have two minutes of testimony you'd like to provide. If we're done with testimony, then we can just take general questions. Is there anyone else? We have testimony for this evening? Okay, I see none. Dante, do you see any questions? Any raised hands?
I see none.
Okay. So at this time, we'll take, if there are general questions with respect to the proposal, ConEd's position, we'll take questions at this time. I see, okay, Ms. Boyd, I see you. Take your question.
Okay, give me one. All right.
And Mr. Almanor, I see your hand raised as well, so we'll take your question right after.
May I ask my question? May I ask my question now?
Yes, you're recognized.
Okay. One of the things that the presenter had talked about was the fact that there's a possibility that communities that may not be very wealthy might be left behind, quote unquote. That was her wording. And again, because this information has not been disseminated in any committee, it's maybe not, now being confirmed, I would like to understand exactly what that means. I'm not clear about how a community can be left behind with an initiative, and what would the choices, she talked about the possibility of having all these choices. And would these choices include different prices? So what is the issue about a community being left behind based on finances?
Ms. McClure. McClure, you're muted. Still unmuted.
Sorry about that. The comment wasn't about.
If I can ask, if you're not speaking, could you please mute your microphones because we're getting feedback.
The comment wasn't about the use of the word wealthy. It was ensuring that everyone was, had the opportunity to really understand the impact on what this transition means. There is going to be costs involved with that. At this time, I haven't heard of any particular costs associated with it because it's too new in the process. But to the gentleman's point about the other, the gentleman who made a comment about, you know, what does that cost look like when you're trying to retrofit? Those are things that still have to be worked out. When we're saying no community should be left behind, we want to ensure that everyone has an opportunity, one, for the awareness of it, two, to decide what choices they would like to make if they have an option as opposed to just pure electrification, to perhaps looking at an alternative that we're asking, that we're, that we're asking to be considered, like using green hydrogen or a hydrogen. or a hydrogen blend or uh RNG or thermal, you know, geothermal. What we're saying is that we want to provide the options for anyone to have choices choices to consider other than electrification. That was that was the purpose of those wordings. When we say no community is to be left behind.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Almanor will take your question and you will be the last one. At that time, we'll have exhausted our period for our time for the um for the hearing. Well, Ms. Almanor, you have your question.
Yeah, my question for Mr. Claw. Do you have a timetable when green hydrogen will be available in the pipeline? I know about the idiom is being blended. When will you get uh green hydrogen? Because been following some of the development between the wind energy within the New York Metropolitan area from all the way from Southwind to the bite in New York Bay. When you find National Grid will have specifically delegated pipeline into the residential market for green hydrogen.
So again, thank you for that question. So again, this is very new. There is no defined date. You know, our goal again is to meet that twenty fifty deadline of making sure we um have no fossil fuels. This all this technology, looking at how all these things are going to uh work out is still very new. You know, everyone, there's a lot of technology that's out there that's still yet to be developed. So we are looking at, we are, you know, working with organizations, you know, to look at geothermal. What does that look like? One of the projects that we're uh working with the PSE right now is, you know, looking at pilot ge uh geothermals. So we can understand what the ramifications would be or what's involved in bringing geothermal into an urban area, you know, because of the space constraint. So this is all new, uh but everyone is on board trying to move this initiative forward. So to answer your question, many of those questions are not answered. They're still being developed. Uh but we do know that we have to move in that direction. And we're doing what we, you know, we're continuously looking at ways to develop, identify ways to implement and ensure that we can move forward in this initiative.
Just want to add one quick follow up question. Is Coogen is going to be part of the what's going to be available for residential customers and that and?
That's a possibility. At this at this time, we're not ruling anything out until we get to that that sweet spot of understanding what everything is involved. What 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 will what will be needed to move that needle forward? So there's a possibility of that still being in the process. Nothing has been taken off the table.
Okay, Ms. McLaurie, thank you so very much for your time this evening. We really appreciate you coming and the materials that were provided. Uh and for everyone, um and I think we've heard we've heard a recurring theme for this evening. This is brand new. There are a lot of, we don't know what we don't know yet. Um but one of the things we wanted to do is, at least as early as possible, start, you know, initiate the conversation. Get those initial thoughts. Um this is something, you know, we just want to have an understanding so that way when we refer back to the appropriate committee or committees, uh we're able to start asking, you know, these questions and and seeing what kind of answers we get uh and seeing if there's any contributions we make to it. Um, you know, I've heard, okay, well, listen, you know, there's cheap plans, we, you know, you can get financing for things. Um but I think it is important that we understand what the options are because not all options, you know, it's not a one size fit all necessarily. Um, you know, kind of solution where it's like my house may not be able to take uh or be too, you know, cost prohibitive for me to convert to complete electrification. Uh or, you know, for me, you know, because we see it just with going from oil to natural gas or whatever you do. There are costs that are involved as as well. Uh and not to say that there is a value on one or the other. But we're beginning the conversation. I want to thank everyone for for for, you know, for the energy and the attention that we paid for it this evening. Uh and this is not a conversation that is dead at CB nine. It's very much alive and it's going to be continuing for some time to come. Um, Ms. McLaurie, again, I want to thank you for coming. Um and and, you know, I guess we'll put you on speed dial because you may be coming back, uh, you know, a couple of times in terms of, you know, as a subject matter expert.
Absolutely. Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity. Thank you so much. Everyone, have a wonderful and safe Thanksgiving holiday.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, we have concluded our public hearing. Uh yes, the the monthly hearing. We are now going to, I'm now calling the public session, the the general board meeting to order. Uh once again, for those who have joined a little bit later, uh well, the time is about seven thirty-seven PM. My name is Fred Baptiste. I serve as Chair of Community Board Nine. I welcome everyone who has come this evening. Uh so uh we are going to begin our public session. Uh first, uh just a couple of housekeeping items. One, I want to call everyone's attention to the rules of order. Uh the rules of order are posted on the Community Board Nine website. Uh I'm going to waive the reading of those uh minute of those order of that document. But simply to say that we are here in the spirit of community, of collaboration, of cooperation. Uh we just simply ask for respect for everyone, for their time, for their thoughts. We can uh disagree without being disagreeable. Uh it's okay for us to to have differences of opinion. It's in those conversations that we get stronger and we get better and we get smarter. Uh just as a housekeeping item, so for those uh members of the board or the community, if you are on Zoom by phone, uh for us to be able to recognize you, uh if, you know, at the appropriate time, please use the star nine function. That is the raise hands function that will allow us to see that you have a question or comment that you are trying to give the board. And at the appropriate times, we can recognize you. Uh and for you, if you're on the phone as well, um when you are on, so when you are promoted, please use the star six function. When you are promoted, you will be prompted to use star six to unmute yourself. Uh please be cognizant if you are online to make sure to to mute yourself as well. Uh so that way, uh we're not getting feedback and it's not a distraction to all the other speakers into the meeting. Uh and lastly, I just want to remind everyone, please, uh to make sure that we can ensure order, wait to be recognized. But once you are recognized, we will identify there's a speakers list, uh or or anything such, you know, such. At that time, you will be given the floor and the opportunity to address the board. Uh and with that, we are now going to move on to the next item in the agenda, which will be the uh the SLA applications. Uh do we have the Chair of Public Safety with us? Primo, you're here? I think I see him. Uh we'll give him a moment to um uh to unmute, but we have.
Hey Fred, so sorry about that. My apologies.
I was trying to do the tap dance here. No worries.
No, no, no. That's my bad.
So Primo, you have the floor.
Absolutely. So we're talking about the uh the three applications um in front of the board this month. Um so we, at summary level, are recommending all three applicants to be um moved forward and uh we're recommending that each of them be approved. Um and give me one second. Let me just pull them up for you really quickly here. And we'll talk through them. So there are three in front of uh that went in front of committee this month. Um I will start with one uh that is a new application. Two of them are renewals. One is a new application. The new application is for a restaurant and, uh well, it's just a restaurant uh called Island Escape. It will be located at eight oh seven Nostrand Avenue. Um it is, as I said, a restaurant. They are applying for a full license, which is beer, liquor and wine. Um the hours of operation for the restaurant are going to be seven AM to eleven PM Monday through Thursday and seven AM to two AM on Friday and Saturday. And then seven AM to eleven PM on Sunday, so accepting um Friday and Saturday, they're open until eleven PM. Um and it is Caribbean food. There are ten tables and twenty-eight seats. One of the important questions that was raised in committee for us was, uh well, two questions really that were important for us. The first question was, are they going to have security on Friday and Saturday nights? They do have security listed in their application and uh they do intend to have security on both of those nights. Um and then another important piece for us was that this particular restaurant owner um is a restaurant owner in Georgia, so they they live in Atlanta, but they have roots in this community. Um they're they were raised in this community and their parents were raised in this community. And so um they are opening a restaurant here. And our main concern was, are they going to hire local staff for this restaurant? And uh so we actually called them back to committee. Uh they had presented to us two months ago. We asked them to come back so that they could commit to that and they came back and did commit to um hiring local staff. Um they have all of the required signatures from community members. And uh a menu was presented as well as a floor plan for the restaurant and some renderings of what it would look like in the future. So that is Island Escape. Uh Fred, do you want me to pause after each um restaurant or do you want me to continue through?
You know what? If it's possible, let's take a couple of, or actually, if we can get a a brief presentation from the applicant. Uh they can introduce themselves, their establishment, um and maybe possibly a couple of questions.
Absolutely. Yes. Is the representative from Island Escape here? Sorry, there's too many people for me to be able to see.
The representative from Island Escape? You just use the raise hand function. We'll find you uh in the participant. See them. Uh okay, so listen, I'll tell you what. Did you, I'm sorry, are they here?
No, I'm not seeing them now.
Okay, so listen, let's come back to them. So we'll come back. So so Primo, if you could give us the next applicant.
Absolutely.
Actually, it might be helpful. If you are an applicant here this evening, if you just use the raise hand function so that way we can find you quickly at the right time.
Great.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no worries. Uh our next applicant is Bar Four, uh also known as Bar By O. Uh that is located at ten sixty-six Nostrand Avenue. Um and they are a jazz bar. If you are familiar with them, they have been around for a while. This is a renewal application. This is a full liquor uh license, so wine, beer and spirits. Um the hours of operation are um fairly early, uh well, six six to one, um Monday through Thursday, five to one uh Friday and Saturday. And then uh outdoor hours are six to eleven and five to eleven. Um they are serving kind of small plates of food and then primarily are a bar for music. Um they provided us with their menu as well. We uh did a check uh for FDNY and for NYPD and there have not been any noise complaints at this location. Um if the representatives from the restaurant are here, they also charge no cover fee, uh so folks can come in and listen to jazz. They have a relationship with a foundation that um provides half of the payment for their artists. Uh so I can see if uh any of the representatives from Bar Four, Bar By O are here currently. I don't see a raised hand, but maybe Dante does.
Um she's here, Cass Collins.
Oh.
As a representative.
Great. Cass, would you like to uh just just tell the uh community a little bit about your establishment?
That group this evening.
Yeah, client group. Uh oh, she just came off mute. Cass, we can't hear you though. Not yet. Still having audio issues. We we can't hear you. Yeah, I see you coming off and on mute, but there's no audio coming through. Um so should I keep it moving, Fred?
Uh yeah, let's keep it moving. So for the previous applicants, if we get able to get them, we'll take them.
Okay, and uh our last applicant I do see is present with us as well. Um that is The House, uh also known as uh well, their trade name is The House and they operate under the LLC twelve eighty-five Coffee and Cocktails. They are located at twelve eighty-five Nostrand Avenue. This is a renewal application. It is a full uh application. They identify as a bar or a tavern. Their hours of operation are uh three PM to uh to well, one AM. They're re submitting their their application Monday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday, three to two AM and Sunday, three to one AM. Uh outdoor, they do have an outdoor space as well. They'll be operating from um six PM to six PM to ten PM. Uh and then uh well, that's on every single night of the week. They have twelve tables, thirty-two seats. They don't do live music, but they do do some recorded music. And um we asked the applicant just to come back to the uh the committee meeting. Uh they had hours uh from three until two on the the weeknights and thought it would be helpful if they could reduce those hours a little bit after having conversation in the executive committee. And the applicant very thoughtfully agreed to reduce the hours to from three to one. Um similarly, no complaints from FDNY and NYPD. And um the applicant is here to speak about their establishment.
Hi, it's Richard Raphael. I don't know if you guys can hear me.
Yep, we can hear you.
Great, so great. Um so it's twelve eighty-five Coffee and Cocktails LLC, um doing DBA as The House. I have two partners on the phone today, um both Mark and David, so pretty introducing you to to those two new guys. Um they're pretty much doing the day-to-day management. Um so we have relaunched the kitchen, uh relaunched the bar menu and they're pretty much doing the programming throughout. Um so this location is twelve eighty-five Noshan Avenue between Clarkson and Winddrop. Um I think even I was in the details as much as we could have from that from the application that was sent. And again, this is for a renewal of the space. Any questions you guys have? Or um David and Mark is actually on the phone also to answer. They'll be added to the legal license in the future, so probably back here next month, just to add them. But I guess you guys will actually know them by then. Questions?
Okay, at this time, with any questions for this applicant, uh please use the raise hand function and we'll create a speakers list. We'll take uh, we could probably take two, take two questions.
Okay, I see um board member Milford Pruitt's hand is raised. And that's it.
So, Mr. Pruitt, go ahead. We'll take your question.
You're muted, Mr. Pruitt. Can you hear me now? Okay, I would like to know if the restaurant is ADA compliant.
Yes, it is. There's two bathrooms in there and we do uh have a city decal available. So the the second bathroom is ADA compliant.
What is the uh entry to the front door like?
Uh it will be a swinging door that swings inside in in inwards. But that's pretty much.
And it and it's flat to the floor?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right. Is there a uh grab bars in the restroom?
That is mandatory by the City of New York Department of Buildings, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
No problem.
Good luck to you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Fred, you're muted.
That was me saying we take one more question for this applicant. Okay, seeing none. Uh thank you very much. Uh so we'll be considering our application uh when we get to the business session. Uh please, more than welcome to to stay. You can, you know, stay for the meeting and we'll have the determination by the end of the meeting.
Thank you so much. Good day, thanks.
Primo, do we have any of the other applicants? Representatives writing the app of the other applicants?
So uh Cass is present. Cass, I don't know if you've been able to figure out your audio, uh but if you have, please come off of mute. Yeah, I see. I see you still coming off of mute, but we can't hear anything from your side, so um I suppose we don't have other applicants actually kind of present with working audio. Uh so that's it for now. But we have heard from both applicants at length um in the uh in the committee twice now.
Oh, I think we have Ms. Collins. Ms. Collins, can you hear us? You know, Ms. Collins, you're not muted here. Ms. Collins, you're not muted here. Maybe uh is your mute button on on your phone? Because the Zoom is unmuted. It might be your might be the phone if there's a mute button there.
I see Teresa Teresa has her hand raised as well.
Yeah, I just have a quick question.
Uh for for who?
Um I guess for Primo.
I guess for Primo or whoever. I just want to ask about the Island Club. Is, is the other two clubs, the one that's in Atlanta and, I don't know, what, are those just restaurants? Or are those dance clubs? Because somebody did ask me if those, they thought they were strip clubs is what I heard. And I just want to confirm that that's not true or is true.
Well, one is called Johnny's Chicken and Waffles, so I don't think that would be a strip club. And Spice House, you can look it up. I don't believe that that's the case. No, it's a restaurant as well.
I just, yeah, I just want to check.
It's a Caribbean restaurant. They, this is a restaurant owner. It's actually a well-known person.
Yeah, I saw them speak in the other meeting, but that comment was made to me, so I'm checking in.
Yep, they're just a restaurant owner.
And that's a separate permit. They actually have to put that on their permit if they're going to have employee dancing or something up to that effect.
I mean, yeah, it's, they certainly are only applying for a restaurant. I suppose Teresa is potentially just asking about the other businesses owned, but I, I don't know. Yeah.
Oh, the other businesses, my, my, okay, my bad.
Yep, the other.
Okay, um, okay, so we don't have, yeah, Ms. Collins.
Cass, we, we can see you. We're getting no audio from you, Cass. No audio. Yeah. Can't hear you at all.
I'll tell you what, this is, what we can probably do is this. You know, if you want to try and call back in, we can take you at a later point because hopefully your connection, you know, is better when you call back in. So maybe that works. And if anything, we can probably take you when we get to the business session, so you'll be able to give a brief presentation about your, about your establishment. Unfortunately, we can't hear you, sorry. But yeah, but you know, if you can get, if we can get your audio working, we'll look at that, you know, we'll definitely take comments. Okay, one slight departure. So we, that concludes the, the SLA application. During the public session, the one thing I did want to do, we will be considering it later on afterwards. But I did want to take an opportunity to do this during the public session. We will be considering this evening, a street co-naming that is going to be happening. For Ms. Joyce Quamina on Nostrand Avenue and President, if I recall correctly. So it was presented before the Transportation Committee last week. The Transportation Committee voted to approve it and it, it was approved by the Executive Committee as well this week. So we are going to be considering that this evening. I do see a representative from, I believe I see a representative from, you know, you know, the group, you know, that's applying. Is it Mr. Ventura?
Derek Ventura speaking. Good evening.
Good evening. If you'd be able to tell us a little bit about the street co-naming where and a little bit about the person that we are, you are looking to honor.
Well, Ms. Quamina is from Trinidad and Tobago. And she joined the Western Indian American Day Carnival Association over forty years. She was the backbone of the West Indian American Day Carnival Association. She was a workhouse in that she was responsible for the panorama. There's a steel pan association, the competition. Kids back in school, the kids carnival. The vendors, she was responsible for all the vendors, giving them the license and whatnot. And by doing so, it brought, a few years ago, it was like three hundred and fifty million dollars for that weekend to the city. And it's still going on. Unfortunately, she passed away in March of this year. Joyce was, I mean, she taught everyone out there with carnival in Jersey, in Atlanta, in Miami, et cetera, et cetera. And I feel it is fitting that we should remember someone from the Caribbean who brought Caribbean-American together on Labor Day weekend. She also did the Kings and Queens of the band. She was the right hand of Mr. Carlos Salizama, who also passed away. So we as Caribbeanites feel that it is right and fitting to honor that lady. On Nostrand and President Street, we'd like to see whether or not the name could be attached to it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ventura. The committee, my understanding, was voted in favor of this. At this time, as we're in public session, we will entertain a couple of questions that we can ask the applicant to provide any context or any information. But any questions with regard to the street corner, the proposed street corner? Okay, I see Mr. Pruitt.
Yes. And then in the attendees, yes, Isis Gilry. Yes.
We'll take those, I'm sorry, then we'll take one final one from Board Member Debbie.
Okay.
We'll do those three and then we'll conclude. Okay, Mr. Pruitt, go ahead. You have the floor. You have to unmute Mr. Pruitt.
Okay, must you be deceased in order to have a co-named street?
Yes.
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 Well, that's, I'm sorry, I, 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 I strayed down the wrong path with that question. Because I, I find it interesting that the city chooses to do this after you're no longer here. And it seemed like the goal would be to recognize you while you're sucking oxygen. And I don't, I don't get why, because we have one in my neighborhood with Ben Edwards. And he, he has a street co-naming coming up. And, and despite the number of honors and awards and accolades he received, he, he's no longer with us. And so he can't appreciate the permanence of this honor. And maybe it's just my little thing of getting a little pet peeve off my chest. But I, but I, I, I guess I'm wasting time. But I, I, I just find it, I just find it somewhat insulting that you got to die in order to get a co-named street named after you.
I, I, I take your point. I take your point. We should always throw the roses while they're here. Unfortunately, because of the way policy is, this is the one way, no, this is what is allowed by the rules. But at this, at this time, this is what we're going to do. We're going to consider whether, you know, you know, can we memorialize that person at this point? But that'll be the question that we'll take as, you know, when we get into it, to the business session. I did see Ms. Gilry, can you promote Isis Gilry to panelist? Then Debbie will see your question.
Should be able to.
If I could remind everyone, if you are not speaking, to please keep your microphones on mute so we don't get the feedback. Gilry, I'm sorry.
Hi, good night. I, I kind of missed the first half of the speech, but you had said she worked for Weattica for how many years? Pardon?
Uh, Mr. Ventura?
About forty years, about forty.
All right, my last question. Was she on the board and like how long, you said she worked for Weattica for forty years. What was her role there? Was she like in charge of fundraising or?
She did almost everything. I mean, she got assistance from the city. She was on the board. She was a business manager.
Sorry, can you just, I would like to connect with you offline. If you could just like drop her name like in the chat, it would be good. And then I'd like to connect with you offline if possible.
What did you say?
I was just saying, if you could, oh, sorry. I was just saying, if you could just drop her name in the chat and maybe your email, so you connected offline. Would love to connect with you about like Weattica, like the work they do. Thank you.
Gilry, we don't, we don't have a chat function, but if you would like, Mr. Ventura, is it okay if the District Office can pass your information to Ms. Gilry?
If you can what? Repeat, please.
Is it possible? Can we give your contact information to?
Oh, sure. Very, very much so. Yes.
Okay, so we'll make that connection for you.
Sure, thank you very much.
Thank you. So we will see Ms. Timothy and then we're going to have to move on.
Hi, Gil. Derek, I just wanted to know why President Street was selected.
That was a street, that was a street she lived on.
Okay.
Between President Nostrand and Rogers.
Okay.
During the summertime, you would see her outside with the kids. She set up her little boots and so forth. So it would be good to just memorialize her. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I did call the end of the list, but we'll recognize Mr. Almanor because he did chair the Transportation Committee meeting. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I wanted to say I chaired the Transportation Committee where we had quite a lot of testimonial regarding Ms. Quamina, Joyce Quamina. You could contact the board because we got a lot of, a lot of testimony in writing that the board had for that meeting. Contact the board, I will provide you with that information. That give you quite a background what she has done over the years. You brought us some of that information.
Very much for that, Mr. Almanor. Okay, all right. So with that, so Mr. Ventura, so we're going to be considering that when we get to the business session. Please feel free to stay. Once we get there, we'll, we'll have a vote and the board will make this determination.
I thank you very much. God bless. Take care.
Okay, so we are now going to move on in the agenda. We're going to go to public commentary. Public commentary is for thirty minutes. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Speakers are not allowed to share time or seat time to other speakers. I would ask, please, in the interest of time, please adhere tightly to this, to the timeframe. You know, I, I try usually to give a little leeway, but we have to cut people off at the three-minute mark because we do need to, to continue with the agenda for this evening. Is there anyone who signed up in advance for, to, to speak of public commentary? Oh, and as I say that, I would ask for all the elected officials. There is actually a section right after that where we will take acknowledgements for the elected officials and the representatives. So if you could hold off unless you have something really, really lengthy, but we'll acknowledge you at that point. Okay, all right. Are there any speakers, Dante, who have signed up in advance for, for the, for public commentary?
I believe Jay Sourd signed up in advance for a public comment. I'm looking through and I don't see Jay Sourd.
Well, let's look for him. And while we're at it, so anyone else wishes to speak to public commentary, please use the raise hand function. And we will record, you, you know, add you to the speakers list and we'll take the commentary.
Ms. Boyd has.
I do see one raise hand, okay?
Yes, Ms. Boyd.
Let's see, I'll add Ms. Boyd to the list. I do not see any other hands. So at this time, I'll tell you what, while we're looking for Mr. Sourd, please promote Ms. Boyd and we'll take her commentary.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes, we hear it. Yes, we hear it.
Okay, just this past couple of weeks, there's been a lot of discussion about the changing of the bylaws. And I officially filed a conflict of interest complaint against Fred Baptiste, the chairperson of the Community Board, because of his attempt to engage in the changing of the bylaws. Not only outside of a committee, but that would increase his power and diminish the power of the Community Board. There were several proposals in this bylaw change, which included him being able to singularly remove board members to destroy voting records after six months, to change the voting procedures of, of officers of the board and then be allowed to appoint them. A lot of serious changes to bylaws that actually violate a lot of laws. In response, there was a secret email that was sent to the board members. And it was very clear that the email should not be distributed to anyone outside. And there was a lot of misinformation about that email. And a lot of things included in that email that made it look like it was the body of law, but actually it was just opinions by Fred and whoever else wrote it, the email. But just the fact that that email went around and it was classified a secret shows the fact that this Community Board is not functioning the way that it should. The business of the board is supposed to be public. This is a public institution and the community has a right to observe it and not have bylaw changes conducted via emails where the community is not allowed to review these emails or even to sit in on a meeting. From what I've been told, the Executive Board has declined the idea of having a committee, a bylaw committee. And again, it is not the Executive Board who makes that determination, it is actually the entire board. But one would think that the board members of Community Board would be concerned about Fred's behavior consider, considering that some of his proposals would actually negatively affect them, including, you know, the ability to run for office if you have less than seventy percent attendance. Again, these, all of these restrictions will empower Fred to remove board members and also prevent people from actually even applying and being able to apply to be an officer of the board. So I would hope that the Community Board would take it very seriously, the actions. And just for a point of reference, Fred in his email talked about a letter. And that letter came from a meeting, there's the ULI committee meeting in which the community came and voted against the idea of doing a massive rezoning in our community. And as a result.
Ms. Boyd, I'm sorry, your three minutes have expired. Your three minutes have concluded.
Well, I just wanted to say that that, that letter was not actualized.
Thank you very much.
As it was the lawsuit.
Your commentary is concluded. Okay, are there any other members of the public who wish to give commentary at this time? Please use the raise hand function. Again, if you're on by phone, use star nine. At that point, we'll be able to promote you to a panelist. Anyone else is on using the Zoom, you just use the raise hand function. We'll be able to record. Okay, I do see a number ending in fifty-three ninety.
Yeah, I'm going to allow them to talk. Should be able to hear.
Yes, hello?
There.
Yes, hello?
Good evening. Yes, hello, how are you doing? Yes, listen, I'm just, yes, well, I'm new here and, okay, to make the long story short, my name is Peter Payne. I'm a senior citizen. And my concern is with, actually was with Housing Connect. And I see that eleven oh one President Street is under this particular board. Because I see that, you know, the percentage rate of the apartments for that, for that upcoming establishment are under this community board. So my concern is, you know, getting into housing, basically. You know, because right now I'm just staying in a little room. And like I said, I'm a senior citizen. I'm also NYPD school safety retiree. And basically, I just wanted to know what, you know, do I have to be part of the Community Board or whatever to get into this particular building? You know, so, because I did apply for it on Housing Connect, you know, I submitted my application. So, you know, and I see a lot of buildings being filled up in my neighborhood where, that were under Housing Connect. So, so my concern is, you know, getting housing, basically. You know, getting considered, getting into the building actually itself. You know, if there was openings still available there.
Absolutely. Dante, you know, let me, let me, let me defer to somebody who probably knows way more than I do about. Could you address the gentleman's question?
Yes, I, I think that I understand you correctly. The Community Board and that development are two separate things. The community board and that development are two separate things. So the lottery that you needed to apply for is administered by HPD, the Department of Housing Preservation and Development. If you're interested and you're looking for housing, what I would encourage you to do is tomorrow morning, the board office opens at nine AM. You can give us a call and we will assist you to help you look for housing and explain the lottery process to you. Would that work for you?
Oh, yes, yes. You know, I have, you know, I have been applying. I've been on Housing Connect within the past, you know, few weeks and, you know, have applied for different houses. But I mean, yes, I mean, it would help, you know, because my main goal is to get into an affordable housing situation, you know, and, you know, because I've put in paper applications and nothing is I never got any phone calls because it seemed like everything was through the computer. So that's when I had, you know, got on the computer and applied for Housing Connect and, you know. So, you know, because my, and seeing what it says within the criteria, they're saying that fifty percent of the units go to the community board. You know, which is a big percentage. So I'm saying, well, maybe I have to become a part of the community board in order to be considered because just putting in an application, I mean, it's like playing the lottery. I mean, I'm not guaranteed to win.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Yeah, I definitely understand. Yeah, the language on there could definitely be better. If you could, our number to our office is seven one eight seven seven eight nine two seven nine.
Okay, hold on. Let me write that down. Seven one eight seven seven eight.
Nine two seven nine.
Nine two seven nine. And this is Community Board nine.
That's correct. Yes, we're on Nostrand Avenue between President and Carroll. All right, give us a call in the morning. Our office opens at nine AM. And we'll help you and explain, you know, the whole process with the affordable housing lottery and help you look for some housing.
Okay, great. I appreciate your time.
Of course.
Thank you for the commentary and good luck, Mr. Payne. Okay, let's see. Right, so that was Mr. Payne. Okay, I see. All right. One rep for an elected and I see Ms. Collins is back as well. All right, hold on, before I take you, is there anyone else who has public commentary? Because what we'll do is we'll do that and then we'll be able to take those other two. We'll take those, we'll just go straight into acknowledgements and any other participants for public commentary? Hearing none or seeing none. Dante, did you see anyone?
No, no additional hands were raised. No.
All right, so with that, we're gonna conclude public commentary. I want to thank everyone who's provided the comments this evening. Yeah, and so, you know, we'll do our best to provide whatever responses is necessary as well to some of the questions. Okay, so we are now going to move on. Actually, I told you before we go into acknowledgements, Ms. Collins, I do see you. I know you've been waiting for Barb. Is your audio good? You're good?
I think so. Can you hear me? All right.
Yes.
Loud and clear. All right, so, you know, we've gotten a brief introduction with regards to the establishment from the public safety chair. But at this time, if you have, would like to give the board a little bit of information about the establishment on hours about, you know, about business plans or history in the neighborhood.
Sure, thank you for having me this evening. So we've been operating Barb by you for about four years now. It took us about a year and a half because we're a very small operation. We're just a family, truly mom and pop and son. Our son, our adult son is running the bar on a day-to-day basis. My husband was a bar owner of four bars. This is the fourth one. There he is. And it's really meant to be and this is the first one that he's running without partners, unless you call me a partner and I am. So it's, we're partners as a family. We're really happy with the neighborhood we're in. We live in Prospect Heights, our lived in Prospect Heights until we moved out of the city about a year and a half ago. Our son still lives in Prospect Heights. The neighborhood has been very welcoming to us, even when we were, you know, hauling mulch into the back garden. Guys in the neighborhood were holding the doors open for us and welcoming, making us feel welcome. So we're happy to present live jazz every night that we're open with the assistance of a wonderful foundation keyed up, which is meant to promote live music. And we are able to open our doors without a cover charge to anybody who likes to hear live jazz, you know, for the price of a cocktail. And our cocktail prices are low. So, you know, we're very much a part of the fabric of this wonderful community. And we're just happy to be still alive after the pandemic, still functioning. We worked with our landlord to address the rent. He gave us an abatement just on a, you know, one-to-one basis. We didn't have to file anything or sue anybody or, you know, anything like that. So that's the way we like to run our business. We're just person to person. And and we just found out tonight that our son got married. So he's married to one of the people he works with. So we're very excited about that. And sorry, I couldn't be here fully from the beginning, but I was coming home from another meeting. And happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much and congratulations on the new partner, I guess.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So at this time, as we have a representative here, we can, we open the floor, we can take a couple of questions for Barb. There any members of the board or attendees as well who would like to ask a question? We will take two. I do see Christine Bow. Go ahead. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment, just want to say, I appreciate the presentation. It's a great bar and I didn't, I had no idea it was a family-run operation. And congratulations to your son. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pruitt, you see you. And we're gonna close on Mr. Pruitt. Go ahead. You have the floor, sir.
You muted, Mr. Pruitt. What other cross streets again?
Lincoln and Lefferts.
Lincoln and Lefferts, Lincoln and Lefferts. I was looking, I could put that corner in my mind. And how many seats? How many seats?
What do we have? Thirty?
About thirty.
Occupancy is thirty.
I see. And you're ADA compliant?
Yeah, we are. Yeah, we have, our bathroom is fully compliant.
Okay.
And we're just on the street level, so.
All right, all right. A person with a wheelchair wouldn't have trouble getting through the front door?
No.
Okay, all right. Well, good luck to you.
Well, thank you. Hope to see you at the bar.
All right, so that concludes the questions for that. So Ms. Collins, we're gonna be considering the application when we get to the business session. You are more than welcome to stay on. Once we've made a determination, obviously, we'll provide the appropriate documentation to you and all the other applicants as well.
Thank you.
Thank you again for joining us this evening. Okay, all right. So at this time, we're going to go to acknowledgements. I want to thank all of the representatives and elected officials who've been here, and I know I've put you off several times. Ask one last time. So if you are here with and for, on behalf of an elected official, please use the raise hand function. So that way we can, you know, give you the floor and you can bid greetings to the board. Only because we have a full agenda, I would ask in advance, please keep the comments brief. Nice wave introduction and if there's any high-level things that I'd like to tell the board. Okay, only because I put you off before, Mr. Clay, we'll see you first. Then we'll see, I see Sam Weinberger from Councilmember Rita Joseph's office.
Louis, you're muted. Okay, can you hear me? Yes, so I is it working?
You're good.
Okay, great. So, good evening. My name is Louis Clayson. I'm the Communications Director for Assembly Member Brian Cunningham in the forty-third Assembly District. I hope that everyone is well and preparing for the holiday season. Just a few points and announcements. Our office has a turkey and food distribution event on Saturday, November nineteenth, from one PM until supplies last. This distribution is to organizations only. So registration is required. We are also having a few holiday toy giveaways that are, that we are partnering with on with local hospitals in our district for the month of December. On December seventeenth, we have a Christmas grand market event at Medgar Evers College. Tickets from our office are free. And there will be food vendors and a performance by Bratta and by a soca artist Denise Belfon. The member was able to pass four of his bills this year within the first two months in office. And he is entering the new legislative session with ten bills. Assembly Member Cunningham is a champion for black maternal health and has since spoken out about his his own challenges with the black maternal crisis. He joined Borough President Ray Noso at a press conference announcing a new initiative for Spanish and Creole-speaking women who need support on or with their pregnancy journey. If you need more information, feel free to reach out to our office. We also hosted a discussion for dads in October, an Awareness for Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month, where we had supportive services for partners and for mothers. Some basic information, our office is open from nine AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. We are located at two four nine Empire Boulevard on the corner of Rogers. Our phone number is seven eight one, seven one eight, seven seven one, three one oh five. Our email address is districtfortythree@newyorkassembly.nyassembly.gov. Thank you and have a good night. If anyone has any questions, please let me know.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so next I see Sam Weinberger from Councilmember.
Excuse me, excuse me. Hi, Mr. Baptiste. I have my hand raised to ask a question.
We're not really able to take questions. We've gotta go. So they're just giving their comments. The electors are giving their comments right now.
Naomi? If she has a question, I'd be happy to take a number or an email or something. If we have enough time.
I'll give it to Dante to connect me with you, okay?
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Sam, are you on the line? Sam Weinberger from Rita Joseph's office?
Yes, hi, I'm here. This is Sam Weinberger with Councilmember Rita Joseph's office, Councilmember for Council District Forty and Southern Brooklyn. So the southern half of Community Board Nine. I have the privilege of serving as the Councilmember's Chief of Staff. First and foremost, some housekeeping items. We work for you. Please do not ever hesitate to reach out to us. We can be reached at districtforty@council.nyc.gov. Again, that's districtforty@council.nyc.gov. Our office is located at nine thirty Flatbush Avenue. We've got a couple of events coming up that I want to flag for you all. Tomorrow, in partnership with CUNY Citizenship Now at Medgar Evers College from one to three PM, we'll be doing an immigration assistance event. And you can go to the Councilmember's Twitter or other social media for more information. Again, that's CUNY Citizenship Now Partnership. Just an immigration assistance events from one to three PM. We'll also be doing an event, a turkey giveaway on November seventeenth at three PM. It'll be located at Morris Heights Health Center. That's one zero nine five Flatbush Avenue. And again, that's November seventeenth at three PM. In terms of updates on what the council member has been working on, she's been hard at work on your behalf. The Ben Edwards street renaming was alluded to earlier and Ben Edwards was a longtime president of the Lefferts Manor Association. Councilmember Joseph had the privilege of doing a street co-naming at Maple Street and Flatbush Avenue in partnership with Community Board Nine. And I'd like to offer a special thanks to Fred and Dante for their partnership. We wrote a letter to the DOT regarding outstanding speed hump requests in the neighborhood, some of which had been outstanding for many years. In response to our letter in which we urged the DOT to move expeditiously on our requests, they alerted us that our request would be moved to the front of the queue. We're very glad to support this effort. As some of you may know, Councilmember Joseph was a public school teacher for twenty-two years and sadly, she had not won. But two students passed away because of traffic violence and this fight is deeply personal to her. And she's going to continue doing everything in her power to make sure that our neighborhood, PLG and Crown Heights, can be as safe as possible. Furthermore, we passed our first bill, very exciting. Our bill in partnership with Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine will help to bring public restrooms to every corner of our, every corner of our city, including money in every zip code. So that was a major win. Got two more items. We held a major childcare rally. Childcare providers were having a major issue in which they were not getting compensated by the DOE on time. As Chairwoman of the Education Committee, Councilmember Joseph had a hearing as well as a massive rally in which she publicly pressured the DOE to pay childcare providers on time because of the rally and because of the hearing, the DOE announced that they would hire designated coordinators to help folks fill out their paperwork so that they would then be able to get paid in expeditious manner. So in sum, Councilmember Joseph was instrumental in keeping the childcare industry afloat in New York City. Last but certainly not least, each and every school year, there are what's called mid-year adjustments in which, depending on enrollment, funding goes up or funding goes down. If a school receives more children than expected in the middle of the school year, funding will be increased. If a school receives less students than expected, their funding will be decreased in the middle of the year. Councilmember Joseph, as Chairwoman of the Education Committee, was able to negotiate an agreement with Mayor Adams and Chancellor Banks in which any schools who's, any schools that had their enrollment drop would be held harmless for their enrollment drop. So what does that mean in real terms? It means that schools that would typically lose money because they had fewer students than expected would not lose money. So this is a major win for our New York City public schools. And Councilmember Joseph is immensely grateful for the partnership with Mayor Adams and Chancellor Banks. I tried to be brief with my remarks and I thank you all for your time.
Very much, Sam. Okay, let's see. Are there any other elected? I see some people that I might pick one in a second. Are there any other elected or representatives who are with us this evening? Could you use the raise hand function? I do see, we have Beyonce Stevenson from the Borough President's Office. Bianca, are you with us? Do you have any comments you wish to give or are we good?
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Chair Baptiste. Just wishing everyone on behalf of a Borough President, wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving. In terms of announces, I'll be really brief. We want everyone to know that the community board's application season began two days ago, so the application is online. So please do tell your friends, tell your family, well, not your family. But tell, you know, your acquaintances, your colleagues, to let everyone know what a great time you're having and how much change you've been able to make on community boards. Because our goal is to increase the number of applications for each board, because there are boards that even got only like six applications and we, you know, BP also doesn't want that. We want to have as many applications as possible. We're focusing very heavily as well on the youth because under the New York City Charter, it allows for two youth members, sixty to eighteen, on each board. And we would really like to be able to see those thirty-six young members. So please spread the word. Also, board members whose term may expire next year, please remember that you also need to reapply. Again, the application is online. Again, the application is online. Um, you know, you have until February the fourteenth to get it done and that's it. So thank you all very much. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Very much, Bianca. The same to you and to the Borough President. Okay, uh, let's see. I want to say, I see an old friend of the board here. See if she, Alicia, there's Goodrich. Are you there? Unmute her, but we'll let her go at the time. Uh, but I definitely wanted to recognize that she is present online with us as well from SUNY Downstate. Um, okay, so with that, are there any, Dante, are there any other elected officials or representatives, uh, uh, to be acknowledged at this time?
No.
Okay, all right, seeing none. Um, that concludes, with that, that concludes the, uh, the public session. We are now going to transition over into the business session. Uh, is the secretary on, the executive secretary?
Yes, I am.
Very much, Chairman Secretary. If you would, please call the roll.
Give me a minute. Kyrie Ali? Kyrie Ali? Nicholas Amunor?
I'm present, my apologies. Get my, um, thing off. Yes, thank you, Linda. Kyrie Ali is present. Hi, Nicholas.
Hi, Kyrie, how are you?
Stuart Malberg? Frank Baptiste?
Present.
Naomi Baptiste?
Here.
John Beckles Junior? John Beckles Junior?
I'm here.
Thank you. Rabbi Yehuda Berman? Warren Burke?
Here.
Augustine Blackwell? Augustine Blackwell?
Ms. Blackwell sent in a request to be excused.
Thank you. Celeste Chase?
Here.
Sukie Chau?
Here.
Saul Carey? Saul? Jimmy Esteen?
Present.
Thank you. Matthew Fulton? Matthew Fulton? Tessa Hackett Viera? Bishop Servetta Hamilton Gonzalez?
There.
Thank you. Abina Hatchful? Primo Lozano? Primo?
Present, present, yes.
Thank you. Mena Logute? Thank you. Leopold Francesco? Francisco, I'm sorry.
Present, Francisco, present.
Michael Leiberg? Matthias Lindberg? Lindberger, Matthias Lindberger? Courtney Losal?
Present.
Christian Lubo?
I'm here, thank you.
Thank you. Latwin? Mavanna? Latwin Mavanna? Ari Mazursky? Vivia Morgan? Pat Moses?
Excuse, is Moses an excuse?
She's excused.
Oh, Pat Moses.
Right, yes, I got it. Beverly Newsom? Yankee Pearson? Ralph Pierce Boom, he is excused. Pat Pocatty?
Hello, did you say Kyrie? My, again, then, sorry.
Mr. Puit?
Yes, there.
Yunnella from Perry?
Uh, present, and Beverly also sent in a request, uh, to the board a day or two ago to be excused.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dexter Roberts?
Present, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Felice Robertson? Felice?
Present.
Thank you. Rashida Sadiq?
Uh, she's absent, she's an excuse.
I can't, okay. Rashid, Rash- Rashida Skype?
Sykes is here, Sykes.
Thank you, I got.
All right.
Miss Debbie, Debbie Timothy?
Present.
Linda Watson-Lard, that's me, present. Teresa Westerdon?
I'm here.
Thank you. Loriann Wosley? And Cheryl Wright? Mr. Chair? At this time, we've got twenty-three in attendance. We've got one, two, three, four excuses. And then, let me just go back to the people one more time that I would have, I'm going to put absent. Stuart Malberg? Rabbi Berman? Saul Carey? Matthew Fulton? Tessa Viera? Abina Hatchful? Michael Leiberg? Matthias Lindberger? Latwin Mavina? Erwin Mazursky? Vivian Morgan? Yankee Pearson? Tell Tate Pilkady? Rashida Sadiq? Loriann Wosley and Cheryl Wright? Okay, so.
But remember, Rashida Sadiq should be excused.
Oh, Rashida Sadiq, okay, now I gotta change. Okay, so now my excuse is now five people instead of four. I'll give you the absence in a minute. And we have fifteen.
My apologies, I see Erin in the, um, attending, so I'm going to promote Erin.
Yeah, I thought so too, but I didn't hear, so I didn't want to. Okay, so now Erin is, so now we've got twenty-four?
Four present?
Twenty-four present, fourteen absent, five excuse.
Very much. Uh, with twenty-four present, we have a quorum. Um, we have a lot of business to take care of this evening, so I'm going to add, our margin is razor thin this evening, so I need for everyone to make sure, uh, let's stay focused, let's stay tight, but we need to make sure we stay throughout the entire agenda, okay? All right, uh, okay, so as we have a quorum, the one change I would like to make the agenda, just one moment. One change I would like to make to the agenda would be to add the treasurer's report. It was omitted from the agenda. Um, so we would have the treasurer's report, which would come immediately after the district office report. We have common consent, any objections? Call for a second time, any objections to common consent? Okay, hearing none, the agenda stands as amended, uh, with that change for the, uh, addition of the treasurer's report. Uh, okay, next, we're gonna go to the next item, which would be the approval of the October twenty-twenty-two minutes. Are there any, uh, edits to be made to the minutes? Please use the raise hand function, we'll recognize you. Are there any edits to be made to the minutes? Call for a third time, are there any edits to be made to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, it seems that there are no objections to the minute. Um, so we will approve the minutes by common consent. Are there any objections? Call for a second time, are there any objections to the approval of the minutes by common consent? Hearing none, the minute stand is approved, uh, by the board by common consent. Okay, we are going to go on to the next item in the agenda, uh, in the agenda for the committee reports. Uh, we do have a number of action items that are going to come up, uh, this evening. We have one action item from the dealer committee. We have three S L A applications, which will be coming from public, uh, safety, which we consider, uh, heard during, um, the, uh, the public session. We also have the, uh, street co-naming, which was, uh, also presented during the public session. We also have an item from the Economic Development Committee, uh, that we will be hearing this evening. Um, so with that being said, are there any committees, uh, all the other committees should have already submitted their, um, their minutes and advised of any action items. Is there any committee that has an urgent item that they, an announcement they wish to make? They can do that at this time. It has to be very brief, though. Less than one minute. Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move on. Those committees with action items, we'll hear those when we get to the voting session and I'll ask the chairs to please, uh, you know, to at that time to address the action items. Uh, all right, so we're gonna move on. Next item will be the district office report. Dante, um, do you have a, uh, district manager's report for the, for the board?
Yes, yes. Um, give me.
Hold on, just a second. If I could remind everyone, if you're not speaking, please remember to keep your microphones on mute.
Yes, okay, so sorry. All right, well, good evening, everyone. Okay, so for the, uh, B M report, uh, you know, I just wanted to take this time again to, to thank, uh, board members Debbie Timothy and Teresa Westeroff for participating uh, in the cleanup that we had on Empire Boulevard, um, with a group, um, called Cleanup Crown Heights. We were able to do good work one evening and I just wanted to acknowledge them and thank them, uh, for coming out for that. Um, as mentioned before, uh, the two thousand and twenty-three Brooklyn Community Board Nine application is open. Um, as mentioned, uh, if you are set to expire, your term is set to expire, you do need to reapply. Uh, you can find that application on the community board website. If you go to the news section, uh, the link is there to apply online. If there's anyone who needs a paper copy, uh, the link is also there, uh, to obtain a paper copy of the application. Uh, just a reminder, those applications need to go to Borough Hall, not to Brooklyn Community Board Nine. Um, New York City Council participatory budgeting, um, is still open for, uh, idea submissions. A lot of submissions have already been, um, submitted, uh, in our district. Uh, luckily for us, we have two councilmembers who are participating, uh, in participatory budgeting, Councilmember Hudson and Councilmember, uh, Joseph. I would urge anyone, if you, uh, have any ideas, um, please go into the city council website, uh, the information's there. Uh, you can just submit your idea online. Uh, new invitations, I, I know this was brought up, I believe in the last general board meeting or the one prior. Um, new invitations are going to be sent out to elected officials' offices to, um, request representatives to attend our general board meetings. Want to thank, uh, Councilmember, uh, Joseph's office and Assemblymember Cunningham's office for, uh, sending representatives. Uh, the elections are over, so we do expect, uh, the elected officials to, uh, come and, uh, apprise us of what's happening with their offices. So invitation, new invitations will go out to, uh, all members. Um, as mentioned before, I believe it was Sam from Councilmember, uh, Joseph's office, mentioned that, uh, the Councilmember did write a, a letter in partnership with us uh, to, uh, the Borough Commissioner for the Department of Transportation, just highlighting outstanding D O T, uh, speed hump, speed bump request, uh, that have been outstanding since, I believe, twenty-fourteen. Uh, we want to make movement on that and it's very good to hear that, uh, the Department of Transportation is making that a priority. So I want to thank, uh, the Councilmember, uh, for her efforts in writing that letter. We are, I've also reached out to, uh, Councilmember Hudson and Councilmember Mealy, who both cover our district. Um, Councilmember, uh, Hudson's office is also going to provide a letter. I'm working with Councilmember Mealy's office to get a letter as well, uh, of support to just push D O T along on, on these matters. And, uh, once those letters, uh, once I obtain all of those letters, I will send those out and keep, uh, keep you apprised of, of what's happening with that. Uh, the December calendar for the board office is going to shift a little bit. Uh, there are a lot of, we understand that people travel during the holidays, uh, in December. Um, so committee meetings will, will likely move around, some may be, um, um, rescheduled. So just, uh, be aware of that. Look out, uh, for changes in your emails. Um, and we will do our absolute best to get that calendar, um, solidified, um, soon, so we can send that out, post it on our website and our constant contact, so on and so forth. I just want to encourage everyone, um, if you know of anyone who has not, uh, just encourage people to sign up for our weekly e-blast. We get a lot, we, we do receive a lot of information from a lot of, uh, community-based organization, nonprofits, elected officials' offices, um, here in, in Brooklyn and, and we, we receive a lot of information, it's very valuable information. And so if there's anyone out there who hasn't signed up for the e-blast, I, they can connect with the board office, they can stop in during our business hours or email us or, or call us and, uh, we will add them to that weekly, uh, e-blast. Um, also, uh, just a note, uh, we did receive a paving schedule from the Department of Transportation late. Um, there is paving go, uh, happening, actually, I believe it happened today and possibly paving happening tomorrow on, uh, Empire Boulevard between Nostrand and Troy. Um, I believe that that construction, the, um, paving or milling will commence a later in the afternoon. Um, but, uh, we, you know, we, I just wanted to let you all know that that, that's going to be happening. We get notices, uh, that come in from D D C, D O T, um, other, uh, entities that do work around the district. Um, we put those notices in our constant contacts, so if, um, if, again, if you know of anyone who needs to sign up for that, that's a really quick way to get, uh, all of those notices. So, um, uh, with that, um, that's my report. My, um, district service cabinet is actually next week. Uh, we changed the meetings around, but, uh, my cabinet will be next week, so I will, uh, mention that comes out from that, but, uh, you, uh, for the time.
Very much for the report. Uh, this time, members of the board, if you have questions to the district manager, we will open a speakers. Uh, Sukie, I do see you, give me one second, we're just gonna free the list and we'll, we'll take all. I see you first. Is there anyone who has a question for the district manager with respect to his report? Baptiste, I see you, we'll take you after that. Any other members of the board who wish to speak after that? Okay, I'll call for one last time, we're gonna close the list on this Baptiste. Are there any other members of the board who wish to question about the district manager's report? Okay, we're gonna close the list on those two names. Sukie, you have the floor.
Um, just quickly, uh, two issues regarding the communications with the agencies. Are you getting notices from D O I T T, which is the Department of Information Technology? Is there, and are, are they part of your district service cabinet? They are.
No, no, I'm answering to, uh, uh, they are not part of the district service cabinet. Um, if, and I don't see notices that come in from them often, um, not on a routine basis like D O T.
Okay, um, and because, uh, I'm getting complaints from neighbors that they didn't hear about, uh, you know, the five G polls that went up. Um, and supposedly their, their, you know, D O I T T is, is claiming in the press or whatever that, they're sending these notices out to community boards sixty days in advance. And if that's not happening, is that an issue that we can raise? Which committee, you know, if you need committees to look at this, which committee are we going to do it out of? The, and the second thing with respect to G O T, as you noted, the notices are coming in late, that's another thing I'm getting complaints about. You know, whether it's people who suddenly have to move their cars, or, you know, people who are, you know, have some mobility issues and and they have trouble with these unpaved streets, they they want to know more than one day in advance. And so is that an issue that we can raise with them, why, why they're not sending, and they're not posting the notices on the street either until the last minute?
Yep, no, yes, you're you're right, and that is definitely something that I actually, I'm going to bring up with them. It happens often, they keep doing construction on Nostrand Avenue on Fridays in the evening and then posting like in the morning. That's completely unacceptable, and so thank you for bringing it to my attention that this is, you know, pulling the community, you're feeling this, and so I will definitely bring it up, and hopefully we can address it in a rather, a quick manner with the Department of Transportation, and I will also inquire with O T I and and just look to see exactly what the reporting requirement is on these types of things. I will see if they sent it, but I I don't ever recall seeing any type of notice for that. But I will look through what we've received, and if we've, if we missed it, then I will take the the onus on that. But we were definitely looking out for them moving forward.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And just to, just to that point as well, so, and I think you might have heard that, so it it was formerly called Do-It, which is the Department of Telecommunications. Department of Information Technology and Telecommunications, or something like that. So it has changed, it is now called O T I, which the district manager just said it's a social office of technology innovation. Now, the only challenge with Do-It, or O T I now, is that it's typically not a public-facing agency. Typically, they support I T for the city, but you wouldn't see them, or they wouldn't do direct outreach to the public that way. And I wouldn't be surprised if we could probably look into that, where they probably do the spec, the specs and everything like that, but it might be another agency that's actually responsible for going in there, breaking up sidewalks and planting the five G towers. So there might be some, some, a couple of agencies we'd have to get in contact with, so I wouldn't be surprised if O T I didn't send it. There might be another responsible agency who's supposed to take care of that, but with Dante and the team, they'll they'll be able to do the investigation and come back and finances and and make sure that they're addressing the notification issue. Thank you for those questions. Ms. Baptiste, we see you and we'll close on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, thank you, Dante, for your report and always being, having an office that's welcoming. Number one, how do we, how do I, as a chair, get a politician to come or a representative to come on an issue about education, since it's so pertinent that they're doing things in the education field, how do I do that? Secondly, secondly, if there was something that I wanted to do with low attendance in my committee, how would I be able to get these things out there from either, Mr., I don't know if you can answer this also, Mr. Baptiste, from your, from your level, from the district office? Or do I have to go to the chair, since I'm I'm a new member here, I'm just trying to figure out how to work this to make it better in my committee?
Yeah, thank you for that. So i- in terms of the elected official question, you know, what I would recommend is, you know, we could, we could meet and have a discussion about what it is the elected officials are talking about, what they're doing, and if it's something within their, you know, that they're advocating for now. If there's something that, if that's a topic you want to bring to your committee, you just simply ask me to request an invitation, I'll send an invitation to the elected official. Hopefully, they'll be able to appear at your committee. But I definitely think that, you know, we want to narrow down the topic specifically on, on, you know, what you want to ask to the elected official, just so we're getting like good information and not information that's all over the place. But we can, you know, talk sidebar and talk about exactly what issues you're looking at that you want to bring forth to your committee, and then we can, you know, make that request to elected official.
One of the issues was up when, when one of the, when Brian Cunningham's official and Rita Joseph's official, he had two things that I wanted to ask, but since we didn't have time, I couldn't ask. First is about the enrollment issue, that's a, that's a budding topic as we speak. And secondly, the turkey, the turkey giveaway, they have one going on at P S two twenty-one for that day, that's where they're holding it at. So how are we going to tell the public about a turkey distribution when they never told you the address? Thirdly, you cannot just walk into the office, you have to call and make an appointment. And if you call and make an appointment, and there's no sign on the door to tell you that it's the councilman's office. It tells you on the, on the sign that it, due to a high COVID rate, that you have to make an appointment. So, so the thing is this, do not tell the public something that is not so, that makes us look incredible, so thank you.
Okay, so that concludes the questions for the district manager. Dante, thank you very much for your report. And if you do have, if anyone has additional follow-up questions, please always feel free to reach out to Dante and the team, they're very responsive, they'll get back to you. So at this time, we are going to now move on to the next report, which will be that of the treasurer, as we amended the the agenda. Chris, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you. Just want to remind our community board that Monday, November twenty-first at six P M, we are going to have an open session where you can come and learn about community board budgets, how are they funded, when are they funded, where does the money come from? And because there's been a lot of interest in this, the workshop will also focus on budgets from the city, how the, how the city passes its budget and even participatory budgeting. So you may remember when I ran for treasurer in June of this year, I committed to organizing a workshop like this, and so this is what that workshop is, this is following up on on that commitment from June. And so with thanks to Dante, we're putting this together on Monday, November twenty-first at six P M. And there will be three individuals who are experts on budgets. We have Benjamin Solitaire, who's a community board and participatory budgeting advisor with the Civic Engagement Commission. We have Elizabeth Brown, who's the Communications Director for the New York City Independent Budget Office. And then we have Bernard O'Brien, Senior Budget and Policy Analysis Advisor, also for the N Y C Independent Budget Office. So those three individuals will, will provide the overview and provide some details, and then those three, plus myself and Dante, we will be available for questions. If you, if you plan to attend, please, if you have questions that you want to send out, or that you, that you know of in advance, send those questions to me directly, so that I can share them with the nonprofits, that way they can better tailor their presentation to all of us. So again, that's November twenty-first at six P M, I sent out an email to our board about seven days ago, and then the district office sent out another one yesterday. So we welcome you and we look forward to seeing you there. The second thing is, in terms of the budget itself, because of the the nature of time, I know there's a lot of agenda points this evening, I'm not going to go into read out the numbers like I usually do, but the numbers are attached. The district office sent that as part of the list of attachments prior to this meeting, but suffice it to say that we, we have money in the budget, we have not heard from the mayor's office yet about if we are going to have to cut our budget by three percent this year, but we are continuing to plan for that, just in case. We did receive last month ninety-five hundred dollars from elected officials, so that gives us a little bit of a cushion if we are in fact asked to cut our budget, just like all city agencies would be asked to cut their budget, that wouldn't just be a community board, and I think that would be city agencies across the board. So if you want more information on the budget snapshot, that is attached to, to the calendar invite for this meeting this evening. And again, I look forward to seeing those of you who are interested on November twenty-first, which is this coming Monday at six P M, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. So as the treasurer indicated, the audit report was sent out to all the board members, so you have that for for informational purposes. If you have any question, additionally, I also just wanted to add, so the invite for the budget seminar is scheduled for next week. Dante, if I'm wrong, I think it's also on the community board nine calendar as well, so if you're interested in, in getting the information for that, it is open to the public as well. At this time, are there any questions for the treasurer? We will take, we will, we will open the list, are there any questions for the treasurer? For a second time, are there any questions for the treasurer?
I have a question, this is Naomi. I never received the Zoom information.
Follow-up email will be going out from the board office. Also, yeah, in the email that I sent out, I said, send the questions to the board office. I'm going to send out an updated email, send them directly to Christian. So I'm going to put his email in the, in the, in the body, and you all can send your questions directly.
Thank you.
Of course.
And Zoom information will be on, it is on the website, it is currently on the website, right? So if you go to the calendar function on the website, the the meeting information is there, so you'll be able to just click the link on there. Okay, hearing no other questions, thank you very much for the report. We are going to move on the agenda to the chairman's report. Alright, got a lot of stuff here. Some of the stuff will be covered when we actually get to the voting items, a good number, a good chunk of things have also been taken under the district manager's report, as he's been so thorough. I'll try and go through them as quickly as possible, but I want to make sure that we underscore, we've got a lot of work that that we've done, but we've got a lot of work to do. We are now in November, so we, you know, the first couple of months are typically for us to kind of get back in the flow of working as a community board. This is where the committees get together, we're starting to formulate ideas, we're team building, we're doing a lot of activities. But now we are at the stage where we need to get ready to run with the agendas, we need to make sure that we identify the issues that this board needs to be addressing. So it's going to be very critical that we really, you know, get serious with respect to operations and making sure that we've kind of gotten yeah, and that we, you know, that we're, we're ready to run. So first item I want to address, attendance. So Madam Secretary called the whole, we only had about twenty-four, so just a little bit more than than Quorum, the ha- half of the board. Unfortunately, it's been a pattern that has been missing for the last couple of months. Now, we do give some, some grace, because we understand the, the last three months are difficult in terms of scheduling, because our typical board schedule is altered because of the religious observances and the different holidays. We have religious observances in September, October, we have, obviously, Thanksgiving coming up in November, and December is not necessarily much better with regards to schedule. But with that being said, that's one of the reasons why we try and get the schedule out as early as possible, and we need for board members to make every effort to attend. And if people don't show, we don't get the perspective, and just as that, we, you know, we run the risk of not being able to complete the agenda, do the things we're supposed to do. So we are in the process of working with the committee chairs, identifying where the business issues are, and the same for board meetings as well. We, we want to avoid uncomfortable conversations much as possible, and I want to be very clear, we understand life happens. So there are conflicts, there are personal obligations, there are work obligations, things do come up. But we do stress that also, I mean, you know, part of the reason why you're here is because you're busy and doing these things, but we also need you to be present as well and to honor the commitment to the board. So, you know, we are compiling information, and we will be doing outreach shortly in terms of inquiring about, you know, if there are any issues going on with board members and making sure that we're clear in terms of the expectation. Next thing I want to talk about very quickly are the committees, specifically. So I will be having conversations with the committee chairs, again, I think, you know, we give some grace for the first couple of months. Now we want to get more of a sense in terms of where are we going, what do we need to do? What is it that, you know, what are the goals that have been set by the committees that have established? And understand what supports need to be provided as well, so if it's a matter of attendance, if it's a matter of outside resources, if it's a matter of other things. You know, we would like to also start to get a sense of budget in terms of if our activity is being planned, we would like to get that information now, so that way we can start having conversations around what we can do as a board to support, or what other resources we need to bring to bear to make sure we can, you know, make these things come to fruition. So I will be speaking with the chairs in short order to identify these issues, and and, you know, we are looking to definitely improve as we go along, and I definitely welcome all input as well. Very briefly, I think the district manager had also talked about that for the December meeting schedule, it's going to be very different. It's going to be a very short month, it's going to be an abbreviated month, we are not meeting on the fourth week, and that during that fourth week, it's the holidays. So we are going to be meeting earlier, you're probably going to have a similar scenario in terms of, it's going to be rapid succession with the exec committee and the board. Typically, in December, we try and keep it light, try and make it light. We are still required to meet, but we try and keep the agenda light, we'll try and do that. But please, let's put the expectation that we want everybody to be here. Committee chairs, I would like for you to work or have those conversations with your committees and with board office in terms of scheduling, so that way we can make sure we set those expectations very quickly, so that way we know if you're meeting for the month, or if you're able to defer until January. So think about those things, scheduling, and what your committee is able to, what the capacity of your committee is. Next, I wanted to talk very briefly about, this is something that we had mentioned before with respect to the conversations on the B, on the Flabbish Avenue, C forty-one corridor. So that is something that is still very much in the early stages, and we want to take advantage of that, so that way as a district, we can have input. So I'm going to be working with the, the district office, along with D O T, along with N T A, to try and see if we can coordinate a, a town hall where residents are able to come in, get a full picture of the scope of what they're looking at, but also at the same time, let them get the feedback in terms of what are the issues and pain points that we want to make sure that are addressed and any plans to, to do anything on that floor. Again, acknowledging the fact that November, December is tough, it is probably going to be something that's going to happen very early in the new year. So I just want everybody to be aware of that, but that is something in the works, we want to make sure that the, the district's needs and feelings are felt with respect. Covered as well in the manager's report about, you know, the outstanding issues, the transportation committee, over the years, has worked very hard in terms of identifying issues with the rest of the speed bumps, speed humps, traffic cameras. So one of the things is, you know, we haven't necessarily gotten the response we needed. I was very happy to hear the representative from council member Joseph's office talk about the commitment from D O T to make sure that some of these things get moved and the priority is established, which is fantastic. We have more work we need to do, so we're going to continue with that, I want to thank the district office for, for the push, the district manager for making that connection with the council member's office, and and truly, this is what happens when we're in partnership with our elected officials. And we're going to do more with respect to that. Right, a couple of other items I want to discuss as well, yes, board applications, so the window has now opened for board applications. Please look out for communications coming from both Borough Hall and from the district office as well. We will advise, if you are up for a reappointment this year, please make sure you pay attention to the deadlines. It's open way earlier this year, which is a good thing, the, the window is going to go all the way into February fourteenth, the middle of February, which is good, so there's plenty of time. One of the things I want to make sure we're doing as a board as well, because this has been a problem in terms of diversity. We want to make sure we're going out there, we're getting a diverse amount of people who are applying to the board, because that diversity helps us in terms of having the conversations we need to have. So we want to make sure people are applying for, for committees, for chairs, and and for board members, if you see people on committees who are really, really dedicated and really talented, please encourage them to apply. Offline, I will have a conversation with the district manager. One of the things that we did last year that I thought was, was pretty impactful is we actually had an open house, where we were able to bring people in, give a little bit of background about community boards, what we do, what the expectations are. And I'm hopeful that some people actually, you know, thought that useful and 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 perhaps excited them to apply and come on. So that is something we are going to look at, we're going to try and figure out the scheduling when it's appropriate, and hopefully be able to replicate that. More items, I apologize, I know there's a lot, but there is definitely a lot going on. Also, I wanted to make sure that I apprise the board, there is a lot of conversation going around with respect to zoning. One of the things we are going to actually be speaking about and voting on later on is the subcommittee with regards to the City of Guest Initiative. A lot of conversations happening with that, we need to make sure we're involved in that. Additionally, around that, I've had conversations as part of the Um, additionally around that, I've had conversations as part of the Borough Board where the Borough Hall is also, um, looking at, um, zoning options, recommendations, what criteria would be for building and development. Uh, that's going to be a very important conversation, still in the very early stages. Uh, from the last conversation I've had, I understand that there will potentially be a town hall. My understanding was it was supposed to be for this month as we haven't heard anything yet. Uh, it's probably not, it might have been postponed. But, uh, I want everyone to to keep their ears open, um, so when that does happen or when that is, the date is announced for that, I do want to send it out. I do want for people from our district to go and participate and and get information about that as well so that we can have the input that we would like to have in the district. All right, uh, so another item I would like to talk about is, uh, final, uh, finally, uh, we had two committees. Typically, uh, in my role as chair, I'm responsible for the the establishment of, uh, the committees. Part of that is also assigned chairs. We had two chairs, uh, two committees that did not have chairs as of last month. Economic Development and Transportation. Uh, so the only announcement I would like to make, and that's already been done to the respective committees, is that Warren Burke has been assigned as the chair for the Economic Development Committee. He'll be serving in that capacity. Uh, and I will actually be serving as chair, uh, at least in the short order for the Transportation Committee. Um, I definitely want to make sure, uh, my my philosophy is I want to make sure that we're setting up teams to win, that, you know, teams feel supported. Um, so at least at this time, I'm going to be working with Transportation. Um, yeah, at least in the short run, and definitely we have conversations as we go along in terms of what's the best long term to support all of our committees in their growth. Uh, the last piece I wanted to discuss, um, will be with respect to the bylaws. So in the September meeting, I had actually, uh, put out a proposal for, uh, bylaws recommendation, uh, changes. So that document had stemmed from, uh, a number of different conversations, uh, sources, uh, things, just observations as well, where as a board, how can we run better, more efficiently? And I say that, and I want to preface it by saying this. The reason why we meet is not to vote and do elections. The reason why we meet is not to, um, to fill vacancies. The reason why we meet is not, uh, for anything administrative. The reason why we meet is to discuss issues of pertinence to our district. So one of the things that, you know, or at least what part of what some of the changes that I proposed were to, um, to accomplish were to make us better, leaner, meaner, more efficient. We don't spend time on things that we really don't need to spend a lot of time. Uh, so I posted my recommendations and I will know those are my recommendations. Uh, but those are for the consideration of the board, uh, where if we feel those are justified or if we feel that there are better ways, uh, that is the conversation. We had opened up a portal amongst all the board members. Uh, we had solicited additional inputs. So I think from an initial, uh, thirteen or fourteen, I had committed, we received another three or four, uh, proposals. All of those proposals which have been sent out to the board and are available. Uh, so, conversation that happened in the executive committee was where do we go from here? So there was a school of thought in which it said, well, this should go back to committee. Um, so there was a vote which occurred at the executive committee, uh, in terms of the merits of that. I think the overall, um, feeling was that the process that we have put out is is was fairly inclusive, was inclusive in terms of all board members had an opportunity to 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 to, um, submit recommendations. Uh, all board members still have opportunities to submit recommendations as well. Uh, what we felt was going to happen is if we actually decided to sit back another, you know, and go back to, uh, the drawing board, so to speak, with the the bylaws committee, it would really just send us backwards, whereas we're really probably in an opportunity to just have the review and the commentary and move forward. Um, where those, uh, proposals that have merit and the board thinks are, really move us to a better place, we vote on those. And those that don't, we don't. Uh, but otherwise, the point is being that we can move the question and move this board forward and and settle those questions. So, um, there will be a proposal that we will hear with respect to that bylaws process, uh, where we will actually schedule a vote on all the amend, uh, amendments that have been presented. Uh, that vote would actually occur in January, uh, the intent of which being it still allows time for members of the board to submit additional ideas. Um, it gives some time for us to be able to socialize, ask questions, um, and and, you know, tinker around, you know, tinker around as well in terms of approving, uh, any of the amendments that are out there. Um, you know, to get, you know, to allow the the public to also provide commentary as well. And then at that point, we do what the board is supposed to do, vote and decide. Uh, so that would be scheduled, that is proposal, that is going to be coming up as part of the voting. Uh, that was a very long report and I thank everyone for staying up as long as you have, hopefully. Uh, so again, I think the action items I have are included as part of the voting session that we will go to very shortly. Uh, at this time, I will open the floor for questions. Fill up, questions? All right, hold on, let me just create a list. Suki, I see you. I will recognize you in a moment, just gonna create the list. Any other questions? One, one. Call for a second time. Are there any questions for with regards to the chair's report? Hearing none. Suki, we're gonna call, take her question and then we're going to move on in the agenda.
Uh, so are you gonna call a special meeting in January for the bylaws? Because there's a lot of the amendment, a lot of amendments, and if you're gonna have any discussion on them or and then are we gonna vote one by one on them, it's gonna take a lot of time.
But, uh, the 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 intent is to be able to do it, uh, at that meeting, uh, which would probably mean, uh, it'll be very lean where the voting session is really just gonna be about that. Uh, now, with that being said, that is open to change if we really have to, you know, or if if it goes over and we're not able to accomplish everything, perhaps it goes over into another one as well, but I'm very loaded to try and add an extra meeting in there.
Or are you gonna do like a, a, and, uh, like a poll that you email around with like a separate tick mark next to each one or like how, how? I mean, that might be.
That's an idea. I just wanna, uh, we would have to vet that though in terms of the legality for that one. Uh, making sure we're able to record all the votes appropriately, uh, and how we do that. So, but that's a good suggestion, so that's something we can look at. Uh, and that's part of the other reason why we wanted to to give a little bit of time. We didn't want to just try and say, we'll just do it next month because I would think of the issues.
Okay, great.
But thank you for that point and we'll look into that. We'll try and get, hopefully we can get it answered by next month. Right, uh, okay, so with that, we are going to move on in the agenda. Um,
Miss Watson, bring her hand.
I was trying, I was trying to get the action thing go. Um, because I I want to rest my highest support of Suki's question on the possibility of having like a separate meeting to DVD this. We have me having too many, um, comments and too many disruptions on this. And I think that at least if we could, we should be able to, um, you know, be willing to co- to contribute one extra day to deal with this rather than put it part of our meeting where it would be like, send it like rush and then we'd be having comments about not, people not being able to have a say. I really would strongly suggest, even if it mean, you know, making a motion, that we have a special meeting to finish the bylaws.
Oh, conversation, it's a conversation. And and I say that only because, uh, uh, special meetings historically have never been a popular thing. They're not popular in CB nine. Um, so on the one hand, it's like, yes, it makes sense where we just have a meeting dedicated to that. But we've already got a ton on the calendar, a lot of things coming up. Um, there's actually a proposal for, you know, even more things on the calendar with City of Yes and a couple of other things. So just getting it and getting that date is something that's difficult. Um, if it's required, I mean, absolutely, it's an option. But I just say that just to say, you know, let's, we'll, we'll, we'll look at those options and we can see what works.
Okay, cool.
Thank you for, but thank you, you know, for all the suggestions. Okay, all right, we are now going to go into the voting items. The voting items, we have the SLA applications, we have street co-naming, we have shop local. We have, uh, your committee, uh, subcommittee recommendation, uh, the bylaws revisions, uh, the recommendation to have the meeting and the vote in January. Uh, let's try this first. If we can, uh, let's try and take the easier ones, air quotes first. Shop local, um, so the shop local, uh, voting item. Uh, Warren, would you care to speak to that?
Yes, uh, hi, everybody. Good evening. Um, Bridge Street, uh, organization of five oh one C has approached us to work with them to implement a survey of the retail businesses on, in our district. It's basically for, uh, for, for major thoroughfares. It's Utica, Kingston Avenue, Nordstrom, as well as Rogers. Um, we propose that we would work with them to set up certain things, to have a shop local event, which actually is something that the board itself wants to establish to have two uh, different community-wide events. Uh, one is our spring fair, the other would be the shop local. And at this point, um, what our responsibility would be to help them set up points of kiosks on major arteries. Uh, we told them what we could do and what we couldn't do. And at this point in time, I don't have the information if they want to go ahead. So I don't know if we want to vote or just consider an information article.
Uh, I think the intent is we want to vote at least to approve the the event in principle. Um, what date do you have tentatively lined up for the?
Well, right now, December tenth, that could be delayed. So if you want to have a vote to approve, if it's accepted, uh, I make a motion to support Bridge Street, uh, which is a major, uh, five oh one C in our area to assist them in their, uh, how should I say this, in their survey of our commercial areas.
Okay, so, and let me know if I'm really off. Uh, so the motion I'm hearing is for Community Board Nine, partner with Bridge Street, for a shop local event to assist local merchants and also with information gathering for, what was that, was that last, what are they gathering?
It's really the the retail partners, uh, who's in business, how are they in business? Um, speaking to Rand Lodge, residents, et cetera. Uh, this, this specific activity would be to get resident input.
Yeah, and to get resident input on local businesses.
Correct, and shopping local.
Watson Lord, you got that? Hey, we have it moved by Warren Burke. Do we have a second? Pruitt, I see a hand. Are you seconding or? Do you have a question?
I'm happy to second.
I'm seconding the motion.
Well, thanks for removing. We got a second over here. Mr. Pruitt, second. All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Are there any questions with respect to the motion?
Yeah, I was wondering, um, this shop local, would it be a seasonal thing or a one day thing? Would it, would it, would it terminate after the holidays or would it be something that would carry on through the year? What what kind of time limits do we have on the, uh, activity?
Hi, Mr. Pruitt. Um, basically, this proposal was for a one-shot deal. Uh, but in terms of the Economic Development Committee, uh, we would like to continue promoting our merchants. Uh, do we have a plan yet? The answer is no. But will we be doing it? The answer is yes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions with respect to the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna close the floor to questions. We're gonna call the question. Um, so, all those in favor of the motion to approve the shop local event with Bridge Street? Uh, please say, well, let me see. Madam Secretary, if you can, please call the roll.
Oh. You want every individual vote? I guess the roll to see who's here.
No, part of the roll, part of the vote.
Okay. Okay, Kyrie, Annie? Nicholas?
Yes.
Right Baptiste?
Yes.
Naomi Baptiste?
Could you repeat what I'm saying yes to?
Motion is to approve the shop local event in conjunction with Bridge Street for December tenth.
Yeah, I had a question, but I couldn't press the function for my question. So I don't, I don't want to say yes because I want, I need a question.
All right, uh, okay, let's do this. We just want to finish. Let's call the roll. We'll come right back at the end. We'll, we'll allow you to ask a question and and.
No.
Voting no?
Yes. I'm voting no.
Yeah, thank you. We got your vote.
Warren Burke?
Yes.
Celeste Chase?
Yes.
Suki Chang?
Yes.
Jamie Epstein?
Yes.
Thank you, Jamie. Bishop Hamilton Gonzalez?
Yes. I vote yes.
Thank you. Primo?
Yes.
Francisco Leopold?
Yes.
Nina Lacote? Mayna Lacote? Mayna?
I vote yes, this is Mayna, I vote yes.
Thank you. Courtney? Lisselle?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Erin Wazerski? All right?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Pui?
Yes.
Unelda Ron Perry?
Yes.
Dexter Roberts?
I have stream.
Absolutely, okay. Felice Robertson?
Um, yes.
Radisha Scott, Rashida Skypes?
Yes.
Timothy, Debbie Timothy?
Yes.
Linda Watson Lord, yes. Ms. Wester Dawn?
Um, I lost my earbud for a second, so I I didn't, I didn't hear what we're voting on. All of it, just part of it. So can somebody tell me or I'll have to say no or abstain?
The motion is for CB nine, uh, yeah, you know, I'll tell you what, hold off. Uh, when we get to the end, we'll, I'll repeat the question if you can, if you want to, uh, place a vote at that time.
She's the last.
Oh, she's the last, okay. All right, so the motion on the floor, the motion on the floor is for CB nine, uh, uh, to to host a shop local event in conjunction with Bridge Street on December tenth.
Oh, where's Bridge Street?
Bridge Street is an organization, so they would be doing a shop local event that will be supporting local, um, the local businesses as well as getting respondents to get information on the the business corridors.
Are we gonna have?
Mrs. Shepherd, forgive me, forgive me, forgive me, forgive me. I changed my, what I was in here, sorry. I didn't hear, I didn't know what this was to me before, but now I know what it is. Yeah, I was in here.
Okay, Dexter. All right, yeah, all right. Okay.
Uh, so Ms. Wester, also, yeah, is that clear now? So you you have the motion?
Okay, I I'll vote yes. Okay, I'll vote yes. As long as it doesn't, as long as we're not paying anything for it.
Yeah, no, that's in conjunction with them. There's no requirement for one.
Oh, one minute. Why am I missing somebody?
Um, excuse me, can I ask my question now or is it, is it impossible to ask my question? I just need to know.
I believe you're missing my vote.
Who's that?
John Beckles.
Okay, John, I know. Right. You're right, because I'm like, I'm missing somebody. Okay.
Ms. Baptiste, we have a close question, but what's your question?
My question is, is that are we going to have anything with the youth involved in these, these events? There's nothing about the youth, and that's what the Borough President's Office just stated. So my question was, are we going to have any local students helping in this local event? That was the question.
Hey, it's Warren. Now you want me to answer your questions? If this does occur, we more than welcome any youth to support this event.
Thank you. So I'll change my vote to yes, as long as you have some youth involved, because we have a lot of events with no students that come to it. So I just want to make sure that we're clear as a community board and as it was stated earlier, that they want the youth to join. So that's why I'm asking the question. Thank you for your time.
I agree with her too.
Yes, thanks, Naomi. So I've got you in. Kyrie Aline? Kyrie Aline?
Here?
He's not there anymore? Okay, good. All right, I've got the vote.
Noted. Yeah, noted and accepted. Oh, hold on one second. I do see a couple of hands. Ms. Chase, what, I see your hand. What's up?
Just a quick question as to, it appears that the event does not include the Franklin Avenue corridor, and I was wondering if there is a reason for that.
Hi, it's Warren. I can answer that. Street is working with a grant by the Small Business Administration, and they chose the corridors. I agree with you, but they're dictated by the grand parameters, and those are the corridors that were accepted.
Can you just quickly repeat again what the corridors are?
They are Utica, Kingston, Nordstrom, and Rogers.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, I see two questions. Okay, I'm going to take the last two questions.
A question, please. I'm sorry, should I raise my hand? That's police. Should I raise my hand?
Please do. We're going to take these questions, but listen, just as a matter of order, this is the reason why I need everyone to make sure we're paying attention, because I'm going to allow for the questions during the question and answer period, but once we vote, we need to move on. Question is decided and we're moving on, okay? So everyone, please make sure we're paying attention. All right, Mr. Beckles, Mr. Pruitt, and then Felice.
Okay, I'm gonna be quick, Mr. Baptiste. I just want to chime in on what Ms. Baptiste has said about involving the youth. As I'm the vice chair of the Youth Committee, and we are involving the youth in a few things that we got coming up. We're working it out right now. So we'll, in the next few weeks, everybody should know, but the youth is being involved in a lot of the things that the Community Board has coming up.
Mr. Pruitt?
Yeah, I didn't realize that the vote had already been taken. I slipped through that, but I would imagine that, because my question is more philosophical, like how do we do outreach to the students? Where do they come from? Do we have? I mean, and that's a totally different topic.
That's something we can take up offline, but it's definitely something that we're noting in terms of as we approve these things, how we get it, how we engage and who are we engaging? But it's a topic we'll take off. Definitely noted. All right, uh, but thank you for the question. Felice, we'll take yours.
So, so my question is, why isn't Franklin included? You have a lot of youth, you have Tivoli Towers, you have Edith Field. You know, there's a lot of youth in this area, so why, why wasn't that included? I'm trying to understand that one.
Hi, Felice, it's Warren. Yeah, basically, hi, how are you? So basically.
How are you? I'm sorry.
I'm good, thank you. Basically, this is not a question of whether the community board is, is involving the city making the corridors. This was a grant that was issued from Small Business Administration to Bridge Street. And we look upon it as an opportunity to find out why more money is being spent outside of our district than inside of our district. So in terms of why Franklin, and I would, I would agree with you, but, but that's not our prerogative. Our objective in terms of the Economic Development Committee is to gather data on number one, our merchants, number two, the empty storefronts, and number three, why aren't, why aren't our residents supporting our local businesses more? So that, that's, that's, that's the crux of it. We can either agree with it or disagree with it.
Well, I think we can agree with it and then stretch, have it, you know, this explored, you know, later as we.
I'll be happy to do that. I was, I, I was, I questioned the same thing. Because obviously Franklin, you know, money travels south and, and up in community board age, Franklin is vibrant, or Franklin is becoming more. But just to note, Rogers is really becoming a very important sector and core for our community. But I will certainly lobby for that and, and raise the question again.
Right. I only ask this because we just lost the cleaners on Franklin, so that's why I was trying to ask why isn't that stretched over?
Well, that, that's a good question. I mean, I, I, I concur.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, um, all right, so we've done that, so the shop local event is approved. All right, we are now.
Do we have a vote for it?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Twenty-three, four, all in favor of? None against.
Warren's messing with me now.
Okay, no, I was really curious. Thank you.
Okay, uh, all right, let's go to this one next. Let's go to the street co-naming for Ms. Joyce Quamina. So we, during the public session, we heard the information with respect to the street co-naming. Ms. Joyce Quamina, who was one of the founders of the West Indian Day Carnival Association, longtime resident of the neighborhood, lived in President, near President, Nostron. She passed away earlier this year. Numerous accolades were received by the Transportation Committee. A lot of documentation with respect to that. As a board, we are the first ones who actually, in the chain, in terms of if we are in favor, after this step, it would go on to the council member's office. And she would, if she approves it, she would champion that with the city council. There's a timeframe with that, because they only do the street co-naming twice a year. I believe we're coming up on the last one for the year. I believe that we're coming up on the last one for the year, so it would be important for us to be able to get the vote in one way or the other at this meeting before we conclude the year. So with that, the recommendation of the Transportation Committee was to approve. The Executive Committee voted to move it to the full board. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the recommendation of the Transportation Committee to approve of the street co-naming in honor of Joyce Quamina.
Nicholas Almona, move that we approve.
All right.
So my Warren Burke, second.
I have a second by Warren Burke. All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Madam Secretary, you have the motion?
On the base, I'm writing. Right, the motion is to move to have the street co-naming, name after, I can't pronounce her name.
Joyce Quamina.
Quamina.
The specific corner is Nostron and President.
Nostron and President Street.
Okay, it's removed and seconded. We will take questions. Oh, no, it's removed and seconded. The motion is, there was just reading. Okay, so, um, we will take questions. Ms. Robertson, hold on before everybody speaks. Let me just get the list. Everyone listen up, because when I close the list, the list is closed. Okay, that's the order of the day. So Ms. Robertson, I see you first. Hold on. Ms. Baptiste, I will see you after that. Are there any other members of the board who wish to ask a question with respect to this motion? You show your hand now. I'm not going to, I'm not going to, to entertain any questions after that. We're going to close the floor. And seeing none after that, Ms. Baptiste, we're going to close on you. The floor will be closed, and we will vote right after that. And please make sure we're paying attention. Ms. Robertson, you have the floor.
I apologize. My hand was still up. I meant to put it down. I don't have any questions.
Ms. Baptiste, you have the floor.
Question is, do we have to wait till someone dies to put a street name?
Yes.
Yes. City Council, City Council, law.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to learn the initiatives of this lovely place I'm in, this community board. So I just want to know, and the question was asked, so thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Unfortunately.
So, um, all right, that was the one question. So the floor is now closed. We are going to call the question. Madam Secretary, could you, could you please reread the motion? Hope you're on mute, sorry.
Just tell the lady's name for me. I am.
Sure. It's Joyce, last name Q U A. M I N A, Quamina.
Quamina, thank you. Motion moved by Nicholas Amannar, second by Warren, for the street co-naming of Ms. Joyce Quamina Streets, Nostron and President Street. So move and second it.
At this time, Madam Secretary, please call the roll. All board members, please, listen for your names. For your names, the question's been read.
Kyrie Ali? Nicholas Amannar?
Yes.
Fred Baptiste?
Yes.
Naomi Baptiste?
Yes.
John Beckles Jr.?
Yes.
Warren Burke?
Yes.
Celeste Chase?
Yes.
Suki Chau?
Yes.
Thank you. Jamie Epstein?
Yes.
Bishop Hamilton Gonzalez?
Yes.
Primo Lasana?
Yes.
Francisco Leopold?
Yes.
Nina Lagutte?
Yeah.
Thank you. Martinelius? Lusak?
Yes.
Kristen Lubo?
Yes.
Erin Mazurky? Erin? Erin?
Yes.
Mr. Milford Puyi?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Unella Ron Perry?
Yes.
Thank you. Dexter Roberts? Dexter Roberts?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Felice Robertson?
Yes.
Rashida Skypes?
Yes. Thank you.
Abby Timothy?
Yes.
Yours truly, yes. Ms. Lester Dawn?
Uh, yes, I vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Everyone has voted a total of 23 votes, all for and none against.
Very much. Just to have interest, is there anyone who did not hear their name called? Members of the board who did not hear their name called or tender a vote? Very well. 23 votes in favor. I heard none in opposition, no extension. The motion carries. We forward that recommendation to the council member's office. Thank you very much for the vote. Okay, um, all right, we are now going to move on to, usually these are harder, but let's try the SLA applications. All right, so we have three applications that have been presented before the board this evening. Those three applications were voted in favor by the Public Safety Committee. They were brought to the Executive Committee, and we voted in favor as well to bring it before the board. The board and the community had an opportunity to hear from all of the applicants this evening. Is there any opposition? Two of them are renewals. One of them is a new application. Try this first. Is there any opposition to considering the two renewals as one?
None.
None.
No.
No, no opposition.
No opposition.
Okay, seeing none, we are going to consider those two renewal applications, which means it would be for.
Bar for?
Bar by you, yeah, bar, yeah, bar by, and the house to be considered as one package. All right, um, all right, so as we consider them, common consent is one package. Are there any, is there any? There any objection to common consent? Can we vote, consider these, vote for these together?
All for unanimous consent. No objection.
There any objection?
Objection. Objection.
Objections?
Up.
None.
Okay, very well.
You have the floor.
Secretary? Who has? Somebody had an objection?
Someone was speaking before?
No, I said you have the floor. No objection.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, very well. Hearing no objections, we approve those two applications by common consent. Madam Secretary, please put, same, put vote yes on behalf of all those board members who were present for the last vote.
Yes, sir. Thank you, three members.
Sorry? Yes, 23 members. Please note those who weren't that present for the last vote as absent. I have not seen the person. All right, so we have that last one for the new application. So we have the new application for Island Escape, 807 Nostron Avenue. The committee voted to move it forward. The exec moved forward.
Mr. Burke, can you please mute yourself, please?
At this time, we will entertain a motion to, to accept the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee and approve the application. Do I have that move? Have that motion?
So.
It moves by Warren Burke. Do I have a second?
Seconded by Primo.
She got it by Primo Lasana. We'll give you that one, Primo. We'll give you that one. Seconded by Primo Lasana. All right, are there any questions? Are there any questions regarding this, this motion to approve? I call for a second time. Are there any questions with this motion to approve this application? Ms. Chase, I see you. I have a floor.
So this is the one application where we didn't hear from the applicant? Is there any reason why we didn't hear from that person during our board meeting?
I can defer to Mia, but I can't say that the applicant and the representative came to two committee meetings. But Mia is the one, and the board office is the one who sends out the invitations to members. I'm not sure if they declined or they had a conflict or something like that.
I don't, I don't believe that there was any notice of them not attending, but I will confirm with Ms. Hilton in the morning.
All right, are there any other questions with respect to this application? Are there any objections to approving this by? Are there any objections to approving this by common consent?
No.
Yes.
Call for a second time, any objections to common consent? Are there none, Madam Sec?
There, there was, there was one objection, there was one objection.
Yes, um, one objection, I, I am, if I were going to vote, I would vote no, because I didn't hear from the applicant, but I'm not sure if that has any impact on common consent.
It does.
Oh, yeah, so it's not a unanimous vote, but that's okay. So we're going to vote on it, so you want your vote noted as a no?
That's right, thank you.
Very well, we'll do that then. Um, okay, so we do have one no on the motion. Um, so I see that's Ms. Celeste Chase. Uh, are there any other objections? Or are there any, any other nos? Okay, hearing none, Madam Secretary, please note.
Wait, wait. Um, I want to vote no, because I wish to hear from them and ask some questions too. I wish they were here, so.
Very well. Please note Ms. Chase and Ms. Westerdon as no's.
No take.
Okay, all of the members who were present for the last vote, please mark yeses for their, uh, well, actually, is anyone who wishes to abstain? Let me ask that question.
I abstain.
Okay, one.
Noted.
All right, noted.
One extension.
Um, can you change me to abstain to?
Yes, I can.
Sorry about that. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, two extensions.
One against.
One no. One again. And please note all of the members as a yes.
That's twenty. Twenty yes.
No. Naomi Baptiste is a no.
That's two nos, please note that.
Any other changes before we put this to debate?
All right, so the vote is recorded, the motion passes, um, the application is approved. Okay, so we are now going to move on to the recommendation by the Euler, uh, committee for a subcommittee on the city of yes initiative for the city. Um. Okay, Warren as the chair, do you care to give a little bit of background with respect to the, the motion that was, uh, passed?
Uh, yes, first of all, I'm not the chair. I'm the first vice chair and Pat Moses is on vacation. And she's asked me to put this forward. Uh, basically, the committee was very concerned about the city of yes and how that affects our district uh, in a whole number of things, whether it's zoning, whether it's transportation and whether it's health and welfare. Uh, it's across the board. So what the committee has brought forth, and we can all read the, uh, the meeting notes, uh, for details, is to make a motion, which I'm making now, to create a subcommittee that will analyze the city of yes, text amendment, their legal ramifications, and the effects on the community and report their findings back to the Euler committee. Do you have that, Linda?
Yes, I have it.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Warren Burke. Do we have a second for the motion?
Uh, Naomi Baptiste, second the motion.
Thank you, Naomi.
There's a second, uh, so it's removed and seconded. This time we'll open the floor for questions. Uh, please raise your hand if you have a question with regards to the motion. Yeah, I see you, hold on, let's see, um, let me just create the list. Westerdon, I see you, hold on. Naomi, I see you, hold on. Pruitt, I see you as well. Are there any other questions with respect to this motion? Please, uh, raise your hand right now, identify yourself so I can create the list. All for one last time, are there any other persons who wish to speak with respect to this motion? All right, I see four members of the board who wish to speak. Uh, Ms. Chung, Ms. Westerdon, Ms. Baptiste, and Mr. Pruitt, we are going to close on Mr. Pruitt. Okay, last, that was the last call, we're going to close on Mr. Pruitt. Tsuki, you have the floor.
Um, I just want to encourage all of the board members to consider attending our subcommittee meeting when it's announced. It will be sent out publicly as well as our regular land use committee meetings, because these are issues that are really affecting every corner of the district. You know, whether you're somebody who's seeing new construction on your block next to you, somebody who's worried about getting housing, um, you know, somebody who's worried about traffic issues or small business issues. These land use and zoning issues really set, kind of set the stage for a lot of other things that are going to happen going into the future. And it often, the zoning often sounds like it's very technical and very complicated, but it really speaks to a lot of everyday concerns, and we would welcome everybody learning more about what's going on.
Um, Ms. Westerdon.
I just wanted to say something similar to what Tsuki said, is that everybody's invited. Even members of the community, members of the board, I plan on, uh, attending, so uh, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, that everybody can attend and should attend if you can. Thank you.
Baptist.
Yes, I got two questions. First, how does this affect education with the zoning? Due to the zoning, um, of schools, there's low enrollment in the education for public schools where if you don't, if you don't put it in the zoning, they are outsourcing, um, children into this district that we cover. And charter schools are inside the schools, which does not house, um, community board nine children due to low enrollment. So is the, is this subcommittee going to touch that part? Secondly, with the zoning issue, um, the more times that the public is not aware about zoning, the, the zoning affects, as Asuki said, your neighborhood, and for example, my child can't go to a school that's right across the street from me because of a zoning issue. Due to the fact that there's no, there is, there's low enrollment throughout District Seventeen that we cover, they can accept my child, but if possible, if it doesn't have room for my child, my child cannot go to that school. So please make that an issue about your subcommittee, thank you.
Um, Pruitt.
I'm sorry, excuse me, could I get that person's name and number who just spoke? Can I give her name and number?
Make sure our mic is muted, please.
Okay, can I get her name and?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I, um, I have to plead total ignorance, because I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of the subcommittee, but I don't know what exactly they're going to do. And, um, and then once, and once again, maybe this is something that can be discussed off, offline. I mean, without, well, it was saving time, but, but I, but I'm, I'm really flummoxed over what this subcommittee is going to do.
Hi, it's Warren, may I answer that?
Sure.
Uh, basically, Mr. Pruitt, what this is, is we're trying to work ahead of the city of yes and to research exactly what it means.
And what is the city of yes? What is the city of yes?
Yes, that's a proposal by Mia Adams, and I think it's to fast-track certain development, that's just my opinion. And since it's just my opinion, what we'd like to do is to get ahead of the ball and to research exactly what they're saying and proposing, and then taking that information and bringing it to the board.
I see, I think.
It's, can I say something?
That's kind of the point of the, that's kind of the point of the subcommittee, where they're going to be helping us understand exactly what's going on, what the, the proposals are asking, what's potential. So, no, it, it is, that's why we're doing this, so that way everyone can get a better understanding.
All right.
It's going to take a lot of, can I say something, sorry?
Uh, we, we really need to move on, Ms. Westerdon.
All right.
Uh. Um, okay, so with that, uh, we are going to, I need to close.
Excuse me, Chair, uh, it's, you know, I had my hand out.
I, I had called a few times and I said Mr. Pruitt was the last one.
Okay, I just want. Um, I want to know if I'm on this end of the forty-third, and I want to know if that's included, because we're always excluded on this end.
It's the whole city, Yunnella, definitely, you're included.
I understand, but if we're going to do, um, from CB nine, are, is there any plan in ensuring that this end is also captured? So that's just my question, because we're never, we're, it's like we're not. So I just wanted to make sure that, that I put it out there, that's all.
Please come to the meetings.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, with that, that's the final question. Uh, the floor is now closed. We are going to vote on the measure. So the motion was to, uh, create a subcommittee, uh, on the city of yes, which would investigate a number of the impacts, the full text of the, um, and in the subcommittee will report to the Euler committee, report it to the Euler committee and inform them. Uh, so with that, there any objection to common consent?
More for common consent?
No objection.
Uh, hold on, you know, the only thing is we need a roll call vote, because our participant dropped by one, so we lost the vote, so we need to. Uh, Madam Secretary, if we can very quickly call the vote. You're muted, muted.
The roll for the vote ought to see who is still here.
Uh, for the vote.
Okay.
We'll get the attendance from the vote.
All right. Kyrie Ali. Nicholas Almanar.
Yes, former subcommittee.
Fred Baptiste.
Yes.
Naomi Baptiste.
Yes.
John Beckles Jr.
Yes.
Warren Burke.
Yes.
Celestace.
Yes.
Tsuki Chow.
Yes.
Jamie Estine.
Yes.
Bishop Hamilton Gonzalez.
Yes.
Primo Lozana. Primo?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Francisco Leopold.
Yes.
Mina Logote.
Yes.
Cortinet.
Yes.
Christian Lubo.
Yes.
Erin.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Puyi, please.
Yes.
Yunnella Ron Perry.
Yes.
Dexter Roberts.
Yes.
Belice Robertson.
Yes.
Reshida Skyes.
Yes.
Thank you. Debbie Timothy.
Yes.
Myself. And Ms. Teresa Lesterdon.
I vote yes, former subcommittee, please.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, twenty-three yeses, same as every other vote.
Who was absent? Who is absent?
Hmm, well, of the absence that were, that, from beginning was Kyrie Ali. Sir Bal Burke.
Okay, no, no, you know, so then it was perhaps someone else, but all the members who voted on the last vote were here too.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure, if I saw a participant drop, I need to make sure we're just reporting.
No, from all three votes before, everybody was still there.
Okay, no, thank you very much for confirming. Okay, um, all right, so we are now to the last item for the voting session, uh, which is the bylaws. So at the executive committee, uh, we had a vote to, um, uh, we had a vote to actually have, uh, the amendments, uh, the proposed amendments presented and voted on at the January, uh, general board meeting. Uh, so the rationale behind that was, you know, we've done a lot of great work. The amendments have been out since the end of September. We've had additional amendments that have been added, uh, since then, but I think we have a good body in terms of, of possibilities, in terms of how we, we alter the bylaws to make sure that they work through us. So, um, rather than continue or bog down a process, we just want to make sure that we come to a decision one way or another on, on all of the amendments that have been. So currently, I believe it's about seventeen or eighteen, and forgive me if I, you know, the, the correct, the exact numbers currently on the, um, document, documents that are, I'm sorry, amendments that we're looking at. Um, the process is not closed, where we will have the opportunity to introduce additional amendments. Um, and those we would close off at some point prior to the, um, the January vote, but we want to be able to move forward, uh, and make sure that we're able to address. Uh, so at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt, um, the recommendation to have the, uh, vote on the amendment at the January general board meeting. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I hate to be this person, but I don't believe that you have quorum.
We have twenty-three.
We got twenty-three people.
I'm counting the panelists, board members, and I count twenty-two.
Who's missing? That didn't vote, that voted just now and then left.
I, I, I can't tell that, that would be something you would be able to tell on your end.
Right.
No, that was the thing, we, I saw thirty-one one time, and that's why I asked. Yeah, I saw thirty-two, somebody dropped, but it wasn't a board member.
We've got. Okay, hold on.
Okay.
Hey, it's Warren, why don't we take a roll call again, just to determine.
Hey, hold on, hold on, Warren.
Okay.
We're missing Kyrie, no?
Right, but you were twenty-four.
Kyrie was missing for a long time, he hasn't voted on nothing since we started to vote, so he was not, he was not, he have not dared to vote for nothing. Hold one minute. So.
My apologies, you're correct, I forgot to count Fred Baptiste.
Thank you.
You know, you know, Dante is a district manager, that's not great.
I'll be.
That's a joke.
First of all, let me, let me, let me thank everyone for holding on, we are almost done, so this, please just give us a few minutes grace. We will be able to address this and, and get this taken care of in, in a journey proper order. Um, okay, so, uh, I'm sorry, I called. Um, is there a motion to adopt the recommendation for the vote on the amendments at the January meeting?
So made.
All right, so it's moved by Warren Burke. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Francisco Leopold. Okay, so it's removed and seconded. Uh, at this time, we will take the speaker's list. Mr. Almanor, I see you. Um, any other board members who wish to speak on it? Going to add my name to the list, just, uh, for it. Uh, any other speakers who wish to, or any questions? Oh, hold on.
I see.
Westerdon.
Yep. And Celeste Chase. Yes.
All right, I'll defer towards, till after then. Um, are there any other questions after that? To make sure, I, I, you know, we want to make sure we get through this, I'll, I'll take the questions now, so if you have a question or potentially, please raise your hand. But once we close the list, we need to move on. Is there anyone else who has a question? Is there anyone else who has a question? Okay, so the speaker's list currently is Mister Almanor, Miss Westerdahl, um, Miss Chase, and it will close with me. All right, um, okay, go ahead, Miss Almanor, you have the floor.
Uh, I have a, the question I have at the general meeting to approve the bylaws, will the general public be given the opportunity to offer amendment or any change whatsoever?
It's not in order for the public to do it. Um, the board members can change amendments that are there, but the public, you know, these, this is internal documents. The CB nine bylaws are created by the CB nine board, approved by the CB nine board for the operations. It's an internal document. Uh, it will be a public document, so they will be able to give commentary, but they're not able to submit. Okay? All right, Ms. Westerdahl.
I'd like a little more detail on what exactly we're voting on. I'm really, it's not clear to me.
Sure, so the 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 vote, the 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 motion on the floor is for CB nine to vote on the proposed amendments to the bylaws at the January, uh, twenty-twenty-three meeting, general board meeting.
So we're not gonna talk about them at all? We're just gonna vote yes or no?
We're not, we're gonna talk about them. We we're gonna vote on it in January, but absolutely, the idea is to have conversation, allow for commentary for that.
So we're gonna vote what? We're gonna have commentary and then?
Yeah, the vote is going to be scheduled for January. So at any point between that, commentary is is, you know, is allowed, people can give commentary on that, as well as the public will have access to it, so they can give commentary during the public session, the hearings, or anything else.
So there's no. Go ahead, Mister Pule.
Where where do you file your your comments? Uh, did you wait for a meeting, or, uh, we pass them to you, or what?
Uh, no, the comments, I mean, the comments will be part of the discussion. So, I mean, you know, we will open the floor and people will be able to speak on any of the motions and all of the motions if necessary.
I don't know.
Once they put on the floor for the vote, people will be able to speak.
So you're gonna put on the floor the amendments that you already have written, vote yes or no, we could talk about it? So there's no changes or planning or anything?
Well, no, once they're on the floor, they can be amended. So if there are any motions, you know, any amendments that have been proposed as part of the voting process or as part of the conversation process, they can be amended. So that is something that is open.
Hmm.
And to be clear, um, you know, you know, we had temporary, we had closed off the, you know, the the portal. The portal is open and we will accept additional, um, amendments, so if if board members wish to do so, they have that opportunity as well. Uh, we will probably establish a cutoff sometime early January, just so that way everyone has access to the same documents and they can look at it, review, fair question.
Yeah, I have some questions about the amendments that I'd like to go over and discuss with my peers that I'm really unclear about, and I need, I need more information. It's not something I feel like I can do on my own and then vote on it at the next meeting in January. I I was hoping we'd have a a a subcommittee, but that got voted down. But I I need, I need some help with the discussion of these amendments, because some of them seem like not a good idea to me, and just putting them up for a vote, I I wanna talk about it with other people.
That's true, and that's part of the, and and that's part of why there is a debate. That's part of why we have debate as part of the votes. So there will be an opportunity for that, and we can discuss creating additional opportunities. Uh, okay, so with that, so Miss Chase?
Sure, I have been reviewing the 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 proposed, um, changes and um, some I question as well, but I think my my overriding concern is that, um, there are the changes are somewhat significant, and some take power away from the executive committee to just the 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 board chair. Um, so a- and that may be okay in certain circumstances, like the the removal provision, um, and it seems to shorten the timeframe. So I think that because of the importance of the, um, the changes and a number of people who have made, who may have questions and like that, that the process seems a bit too streamlined to me. Um, perhaps we look at certain ones in one meeting and certain other ones at another meeting, but to be on the, you know, in a meeting for two, three hours, but doing other business and trying to really address the amendments, I think that that's not advisable, and it 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 actually will, um, put too much, um, um, scrutiny as to things that we could do in a more, in a smoother, more, um, um, democratic process. So so I just have some concerns about that and just the perceptions as to how it's being done. I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with it, but I think that maybe we can work on something that will make it seem like it it has more transparency and more input from, um, all the board members as opposed to just a few. So just a a comment and not a criticism, but really to to really try to make it a process that we all can co-sign and we are not, you know, um, subject to unnecessary criticism about it.
Fair enough. Um, I mean, I definitely think that, you know, there's there's conversations to be had around there. Uh, I I would probably argue that it's a very, it's been a very open process in terms of, you know, the cards have been put on the table, and I think everyone has been provided an opportunity to put cards on the table as well. And what's gonna happen in this process is we'll have an opportunity to discuss. So truly, if, you know, you know, and and I think rationales have been provided, and there'll be conversa, you know, opportunities to speak about them, and either the arguments win the day or they don't, and and that's fine, because that's what happens in a board. Um, but there'll be opportunities for that, and and to some of your points, I think if there are ways to improve the process, that's up for discussion as well. So so there'll be opportunities. I think what we wanted to do is give one, some sense of finality to it, where this is not gonna be something that the bylaws process, it takes five years to to create, uh, because that's probably in the extreme. Um, but at the same time, we wanted to make sure we consider those points that you just made. Uh, Tuki, I cut off the floor. I'm gonna let you go this time, but, you know, after.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And Fred, it's Warren I'd like to speak after briefly.
All right, and I'm gonna speak last after that.
Okay, I'm 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 gonna be quick. Um, you know, just first of all, th- thank you for sending out these bylaws amendments. I don't think most of us would really have thought of them, and some of them I can see are things that need to be done to bring us into compliance with changes in city law. And I think those things are probably non-controversial, and we can just easily vote in at a single meeting, but I would second what Celeste is saying, that there are probably gonna be things where there's gonna be more discussion and disagreement. And my mind is going back to a meeting that we had where we tried to write some resolution about the supermarket, the associated at Carolyn Nostrian, and people were changing the wording right in the meeting, and it took us forever, and that was only one resolution, and now we're looking at several, and so I I I do think realistically speaking, it might take us more than one session. I I know that when my neighborhood association had to go over our charter, it took us months. I mean, I wouldn't feel bad if it took you more than, you know, than just one session to get through everything.
And and that's recognized. Um, I think it's 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 a target. I personally view it as achievable, but I think when we get to that point, if we truly see that there are sticking points, we have mechanisms in our meetings. We can table, we can postpone, we can do what we need to do, we can get additional information. There are points that there are things that we can do at that stage as well, but I think as a board, we wanna be in practice of we move things forward. Take the time we need to take. We can move things forward and get them done. Warren, we'll see you, um.
Hi, I just wanna first of all acknowledge all the comments, and I also just wanna point out the process, which I think is very important. Um, number one, from now until January's meeting, I would say is two months. Okay, and those two months are certainly adequate for any comments to be brought up. Uh, I think that the process the board has used to put out a spreadsheet to enter any comments that you have to be discussed is a very important fact. Uh, what the executive board was thinking was that we're asking the whole board for comments. So, Miss Westerfall, and I respect your comments, if you have additions, please put them in the spreadsheet. And then upon that, we'll be able to process it, discuss it with the full board, and then move forward. And if a delay is needed, by all means, but the important part is, is that we're acting like there hasn't been a process, and there is. So if you have any comments, additions, et cetera, put them in the spreadsheet, which I believe was sent twice to everybody, and let's move forward from that. Thank you.
Just a quick question, I we can enter comments into that spreadsheet? I was not aware of that.
Yeah, the the last column is for rationales. Yeah, the last column is for rationales.
Yeah, Miss Westerfall, you have all the ability to comment and enter things, so please take a look at the emails, look at the spreadsheet, and by all means, put your suggestions and whatever amendments you wanna make. Thank you.
You know, and and let me say this, I think, uh, but but just to make sure we're clear. So it it's not that you can necessarily, because, uh, the way that the Google form works, you can put yours in. You can't see, you know, we, you know, fortunately, we weren't able to find something where everybody can edit it and see everybody else is gonna make edits. But you do have the ability to put yours in, and one of the things we wanted, and we added that field, is for people to put down, well, why do you want this? Um, so hopefully that adds the color that when we send it out, people kind of have a sense of why am I, you know, why is anybody in particular, uh, suggesting a a change? Um, and again, it's like that's that's a debate. You can say that makes sense, or you can say, no, it's it's too far, and you, you know, and and everyone has that right to vote on.
Well, I can write on that document, I I don't really understand this, or this doesn't make sense to me, or I think this instead, and then somebody can reply to me. And I can see that. That's what I was hoping for.
Well, no, and that's the thing. The document you get is whatever people have submitted, and you see that and you can look at that. Um, the only thing we're saying is that if you see a a a an amendment, you see something that's been put out and you disagree, you can absolutely rewrite it and resubmit it and say, well, listen, this is a counter amendment I would have for that. This is the reason why, for the rationale. Um, but we really can't have the debate on those sheets.
Mister Chair, if I may interject, we are losing members, we are losing persons, and you want to vote. Right now, we are twenty-eight. Uh, because we are just going over this same thing over and over, and then we are losing persons to leave in.
Point taken. So order the day. So we did actually have, uh, we did, so I guess the last time it's been given. So at this point, um, we are going to call the question. So all those in favor of the motion? Uh, do do do. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, I'm all the way down. Nobody's answering. I'm sorry. Nicholas Almanar?
Yes. January, we.
Yes, Fred Baptiste?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
I think we read.
Okay, I thought so.
Hold on, who was that? Who?
That was Warren.
Naomi Baptiste? Naomi?
It's not there. I don't think she's.
Okay. Um, John Beckles Jr.?
Yeah.
Warren Burke? Celeste Chase?
No.
And then beyond that, I don't think anybody else wants to mess with.
Lucky Chow?
Yes.
Jimmy Estine?
Yes.
Bishop? Hamilton Gonzaga?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Primo?
Yes.
Francisco Leopold?
Yes.
Mina Logote?
Yeah.
Thank you. Courtney L- LaZal? LaZal, Luisal?
Yes.
Christian Lebo? Christian?
Yes, I'm yes.
Okay, Eric? Eric Mazursky?
Aaron has, is gone.
Okay, all right. Mister Pule? Mister Pule?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Yunnella Ron Perry?
Yes.
Dexter Roberts? Dexter Roberts?
I didn't know that meant so much to you. I I s- I'm sure I was.
Felice Robis- Robertson?
Uh, yes.
Rash- Rashida Skyes? Rashida? Timothy Deb- Debbie Timothy?
Yes.
Thank you. Myself, yes. Miss Westerdahl?
No.
Okay. Mister Chair, I have seventeen yess, two nos.
Two nos, we do not have a quorum. Um, yeah, we've lost quorum. Can you please repeat the names of those members who did not respond?
Okay, let's go. Baptiste Ni- Naomi Baptiste? She's not there. Aaron Mazursky? Dexter Roberts? And Rashida Skyes?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here.
Okay, good. Yes, or no? How do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. That increased by one, so I have eighteen yess, two nos, and we've lost one, two, three. Eighteen and two twenty and three twenty-three.
Going over this same thing over and over.
Hmm.
But, you know, fair enough, um. Well, listen, so we need to conclude. We do not have a forum, so we need to 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 close, uh, the business for these. I'm a quick, uh, quick comment. One, thank you for everyone who did stay. To everyone who did stay, uh, I I I appreciate your your commitment to this process, um, that you stayed. We will reintroduce the question at the next board meeting. Um, you know, same deadline. I think, you know, the process is is pretty much spelled out, and we will have an opportunity to continue. So at the next meeting, we'll be able to vote on, uh, the date, whether January makes sense, or if there's any addition, uh, any alterations that need to be made to that. So I thank everyone for that, and I think this really comes to underscore again the reason why we need to make sure attendance is monitored and taken care of. Because again, um, it's an issue. It's a problem. Recognize the problem, and we're going to have the necessary conversation. Um, it's a hard conversation, but it has to be had, because it really affects your commitment. You made the choice to be here, you honored that commitment, and you stayed the entire way through. Thank you for that, and we will do what we need to do to make sure that your commitment is respected.
Mister Chair? Mister Chair, before you you wrap up, I just wanted to make a comment, is, well, with the bylaws, sitting down and listening, do not just miss Westerdahl, but other persons that are a little bit more detailed, um, with the the it changes the amendment to the bylaws to give a little bit more details, because, um, there are policies and procedures that's in place, and the board has been very lenient, very lenient with board members when it comes with attendance, when it comes to attending the meetings and the different areas that, um, persons are lacking, and the board has been very, very, over the years, very lenient, and, um, and it's, it, with other boards, it's, it's, um, they don't get those chances. So therefore, um, I just feel that at the next meeting, you need to. You need to go through what the policy is, the policies of the board has been and what, and it has not been upholding and why it has to be amended because. The idea of hearing this and that you want to take over, you want to take control, it really, it really bothers me. And I think that other persons who hear that, they will believe it and, and, and just give a little bit more clarity. On, on as the reason for those amendments and why it had, it has to be in place. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much for that. And, and I'll, let me just close on this point. Uh, for those people who have attendance issues, it'll take us thirty to forty-five days to get them off the board. So think about that while we're looking at the amendments. Uh, with that being said, Madam Secretary, we are going to close. The time is now ten thirty-three. Everyone, thank you very much. Uh, and we will talk soon. And everyone, please have a very happy holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George, John?